The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to this special board meeting for September 26, 2022. We'll start with the roll call. Kinsey? Smith?
Here.
Becker? Andrew is running late and he will join us presently. McCoy?
Here.
Leighton Warren?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Okay, so we are all accounted for. Like I said, Andrew Becker will be joining us very shortly. Okay, we're going to move on to the interviews for the superintendent search consultants. The first on the agenda is BWP and Associates. Who should we invite them? Just go ahead and invite them to come on and join us.
Hi.
Hello, good evening. When you want to speak, hit the little button that looks like a face, a sideways face with a little megaphone. If you speak, you have to hit that first. You will turn off the microphones of everyone else. So this is so that only one person at a time can speak. Mine unfortunately stays on the entire time, despite everything. So I just want to let you know that make sure that you turn that on when you speak so that we can record what you're saying. So. My name is Laura McCoy. I'm the president of the school board. Why don't we go around and introduce ourselves? Go ahead.
Brian Mills. James Lyerly.
Nancy Welch.
Hi, I'm Laura Leighton Warren.
Go ahead, Don.
Yep, I'm Don Smith.
Okay, Don is gonna obviously be remote. Andrew Becker will be joining us presently. He had an emergency and we're not sure if he'll be here for your presentation, but he will be able to watch it later. He was not able to, we're not sure exactly, but he will join us as soon as he can. So if you're ready, we're ready. Okay, very good. Okay.
Hi. There we go. Thank you all for inviting us to come and speak with you. We would be quite honored to come and do your search. We are very excited about the possibility. So we are going to give you a presentation, leave some room for questions at the end, and we'll start by introducing ourselves. I'm Dr. Joe Porto. I am one of the partners in BWP and Associates. I'm a retired school superintendent. I was in education for 33 years, was in various roles, but my last 17 years were as a superintendent in Illinois on the north shore of the suburban Chicago area. Since retirement, I do consulting work. One of my consulting interests is strategic planning, and I developed my own company and I do strategic planning around the country. And of course, I'm part of BWP and Associates. I also spent some time as a university professor at Northern Illinois University, and I work and taught in the doctoral program in educational administration. So I got to teach the students some real life lessons on how to be a superintendent. I'm gonna pass it over to my partner Todd here next.
Hello, my name's Todd.
Yep, there you go.
Oh, hi. This is gonna be fun, I can tell.
Yeah, we, it's, yeah, we cut each other off constantly.
Oh, that's great. So hello, my name's Todd Bignacki and I'm happy to be here. I'm an associate with BWP, recently retired from the education system here in Wisconsin. Thirty-five years in, the last seven years as a superintendent in Cedarburg, currently active in WADA and WASB and Rotarian in the Cedarburg area. I've taught some sessions to new superintendents on evaluation at the WADA conferences and so have a pretty deep knowledge of the administrative network here in the state of Wisconsin. And I'm excited to be here.
Very good.
Sheila, you wanna jump in?
I apologize for that. I have to remember to unmute myself. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, very good. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. I am Sheila Harrison-Williams and as Dr. Porto stated, we are so grateful for this opportunity to assist you in your search to find the next superintendent of schools for Green Bay area public schools. A little bit about me, I am also a partner with BWP. I've been with the firm since 2012, conducting and assisting with over 25 searches. I was a public school educator for over 30 years, the last 18 as superintendent of schools in the south suburbs of Chicago. During that time, I also served on numerous executive boards. I was treasurer for the National Alliance of Black School Educators, as well as president of the Suburban Superintendent Association and the Superintendent's Commission for the Study of Demographics and Diversity. In 2018, I was elected and served as president of the Illinois Association of School Administrators Board, serving over 860 school district superintendents. I was the first African-American to serve as president in the organization's 73-year history. I am a co-founder of the HWC Executive Leadership Aspiring Superintendent Summer Institute, a program designed to provide in-depth preparation for those who aspire to become superintendents. And since the inception of the program back in 2011, over 50 graduates have gone on to become superintendents across the country and beyond, meaning one of our graduates is currently the Commissioner of Education for the Virgin Islands. I serve as mentor-coach to numerous superintendents across the country, and I am currently serving as the Executive Director of the Arizona School Boards Association, serving over 223 school districts with a little over 1 million students. And therefore, I bring a national connection to the search process. So back to you, Joe.
So we're gonna try to answer eight questions throughout the process of our presentation, but of course, if you have questions that you don't see on here, we're gonna be available and eager to answer. But by the time we're done, we'd like you to know a little bit about our firm, the consultants that would work on this if we were so fortunate to get this search. By the way, what you see is what you get. If we were to get the search, we are the three that would conduct it. Some search firms have a person who comes in and does the presentations, and then you might get assigned someone else. So we like to let boards know where it, so if it goes well. The process of our search, how we go about recruiting the talented pool, we'll talk about the length of the search, the costs, what makes us special. So BWP is a national firm, but a theme you're gonna hear today is that we're a national firm with a local focus. That means we have deep connections in the Midwest. We do a lot of searches in the Midwest, and that's the local flair. But we also, as Sheila mentioned, have a national reach, and your next superintendent could come from the national pool. We have a deep history and we've done over 800 searches over the last 20 years. There's 10 directors and 40 associates, and we're located throughout the country. And these last four points on this slide are things that we're really proud of. Ninety-nine percent of our placements complete their first contracts. We very rarely make a mistake and someone just doesn't make it. The next one's even a source of more pride. Ninety-five percent of our placements not only get through their first contract, but have a second contract offered. We've never had anybody dismissed for malfeasance, and we conduct our own internal accountability program after we do a search, and our client satisfaction is over 95% now. So that's just a little bit about us we would like you to know about. The next slide is important to us. Todd and Sheila are gonna split the chores, with Todd talking about the local focus and Sheila talking about the national focus.
Thanks, Joe. So as I had said during my introduction, 35 years in education here in Wisconsin, 30 of those years have been in administration in the metropolitan area. During that time, I've developed a deep appreciation and a lot of relationships with current and retired administrators, and I have a pretty solid network across the state, and some of that leads into Michigan and Minnesota, as well as to current talent and up-and-coming talent. And it's that network that I'm able to pull upon and draw upon, and if there's someone there that fits the leadership profile, I would certainly encourage them to apply. And if they're not interested, I'd ask them, do they know of someone? So that network continues to expand when we're in the search process. That's what makes, I think, me such a valuable asset to the BWP team is just that strong Wisconsin tie. Personally, I have deep roots here in the Green Bay area. Family and friends Bellevue, I know the community, Green Bay School Service, I bet six communities, if I'm not mistaken, fourth largest district in the state. And there's a lot to be proud of here, and I'm excited to just be a part of this team and to be a part of this search. I can bring energy, I can bring connections, and a wealth of knowledge from the school district perspective in Wisconsin. When you think about the national search, my colleague Sheila, she has that kind of breadth, and you heard that. There's a rich, robust national network, and Sheila can share a little bit about that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Todd. Just kudos to you as a board. Your RFP asks very good and direct questions regarding BWP's experience in conducting searches in school districts that are similar size and demographics as Green Bay area public schools. So we pulled together and reviewed our most current superintendent search data, and we're pleased to share with you that in the past five years, BWP has conducted 27 successful searches for districts with 10,000 or more students with a diverse population. And during the same time period, we conducted 16 successful searches for districts with 20,000 or more students with a diverse population. And since 2016, BWP has presented over 99 underrepresented or women candidates for our clients to consider for superintendent positions. And in the past three to five years, we have presented and placed 46 underrepresented or women candidates as superintendents. And of that number, 30 were from underrepresented groups and 30 were women. I believe it is also important to share with you that the diversity within our company mirrors our slates of diverse candidates. At BWP, nearly 50% of the partners are women and/or and/or from an underrepresented group, a distinction that we are very proud of at BWP. So now I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Porto.
Thanks. I think we're getting the hang of this. I'd like to go through the five phases of our search process, but I would like to preface it as also saying that while we have a standard search and process, we're also very flexible. We work with our clients, make adaptations, just like good teachers do with kids. So we're gonna take you through our regular process, and always keep in mind, things can be flexible. The first thing we would do, if you called us up and told us that you wanted to go with BWP, is we'd set up another meeting like this one. And what we would use that meeting for would be planning the search. We'd review the search with you, again, what the steps are gonna be. We would have a more detailed timeline than the one that we shared in the proposal. We would talk about whether you wanted stakeholder involvement at the front end of the process, or have it be a totally confidential search. We'd talk about ways we're gonna market the search. We'd figure out together how much communication you would like, who your key persons would be, so that communication can be as crisp as possible, and who our main liaison would be. And then we'd like to get an idea of your compensation range, because of course, the first question interested candidates always ask us is, how's the board? That's a big concern to them. But along the line, they'll wanna know at least if they're in the ballpark as far as your ideas on compensation.
Joe, do you mind changing that slide?
Thanks, Sheila.
Okay.
Phase two is one of the most important phases. If we are to have a successful search here in Green Bay, we need to know exactly what we're looking for going in. We don't have just a standard superintendent characteristics profile. We don't just put up an advertisement and hope the right people apply. We're very, very careful on the front end of a search to develop a unique profile of the candidate we're looking for in your district. We go about it in three ways. No particular order, they kind of happen concurrently. We will do a survey and make it available to you, all of your staff members, teachers, administrators, the community, parents, non-parent community, even your students, it's available to. And we're gonna ask them, the same three questions are gonna be asked throughout this process. We ask, what are the greatest strengths of this district? What are you most proud of that you'd like to see continue? What are some areas that maybe have been an issue or a concern and that are an opportunity for growth? And what are the characteristics you're looking for in the superintendent? What kind of attributes of leadership? We're gonna ask those three questions in the survey and in the other parts of this process, because the answer and the analysis and the synthesis of all of those will end up being a pretty clear profile of what you need. Someone who can continue your strengths, shore up any deficiencies, and have these qualities to be successful. The second way we get information is we're gonna interview each board member separately, and we will get your thoughts and ideas. And then the third thing we'll do is we'll come in and we'll spend at least one day in your district, and through the help of your administrative team, we hope we can gather together focus groups of teachers, district administrators, principals, parent leaders, PTA leaders, community leaders. And we're busy taking notes through all of this. We synthesize all of the data and we come back to you and we present the leadership profile. And we then use that leadership profile in everything we do. We use it to screen paper applications. We use it to interview the first candidates that we screen. We use the leadership profile to assess how the candidates measure up. When we come back and share with you our recommended candidates to interview, we'll show you about the leadership profile and how you can incorporate that in your interviews and your assessment. So it's a very key piece. We do it very well, and that's phase two. Phase three is recruitment. This is one of the things Sheila will talk about at the end, but I'm gonna give her a little preface. This is one of the things we do best and one of the areas that we think will make us stand out. I mentioned, we don't just post an announcement and hope the right people come. My guess is that your next superintendent doesn't even know that he or she is interested in being the superintendent in Green Bay right now. Because once we get that leadership profile, Todd with his deep-rich network, Sheila with her national network, we now know who we're looking for. And we start calling superintendents and up-and-coming assistant superintendents and deputy superintendents, the ones that match your profile best. So we are active and effective recruiters. We'll then have a period of several weeks that we'll open up the applications. Todd and Sheila and I will be busy reviewing them as they come in. And again, what are we looking for? Who can check off as many boxes on that leadership profile as possible? Phase four, you get involved now. This is where your role rises, our role backs off a little bit. We will have an important meeting with you after we've screened. We usually screen out of all the applications, maybe 10 to 12, and we will present a slate of candidates to you. Six is an average. We like to now say four to seven. We don't set a hard number, because there might only be four people worth you talking to, and then there's a big drop when you hit number five, and we don't like to waste your time. Sometimes we find seven fabulous people and there's no way to arbitrarily cut someone off. But it tends to be about six. We'll have a meeting with you where we'll take you through their profiles, their backgrounds, give you their applications to share, make some of their materials available to you, so you know exactly what these six, five to seven candidates are all about. We'll then use the second half of that meeting to prepare you for round one of your interviews with the candidates. And so we'll talk to you about some legalities, what's okay to talk about and ask in an interview and what's not. We'll come with a slew of sample questions. You can look at them and use some of our questions, or you can develop your own. We'll tell you how many questions you'll probably need going into that first interview. And we'll also spend a little time reviewing with you how to reach consensus in a process like this. If you've never done this, it's a different kind of decision than some of the decisions you make. You will then conduct two rounds of interviews. The first round will be about an hour to an hour fifteen-minute interview with each of, I'm gonna keep saying six, the six candidates, and that'll be round one. Hopefully, you'll reach consensus as to who you'd like to move forward to the next round. Again, no magic numbers. In an ideal world, it's two finalists. It works out very well. We've had boards that have brought back as many as four candidates for round two, and we recently have had two boards that were so taken by the first candidate in the first round, they didn't wanna bring anyone back but her, and they conducted a second interview. So you just never know what's gonna happen. But normally, I'd say eight out of 10 times, two candidates emerge. You then have a second interview. You can do it any way you want, but we like to recommend that that second interview be a little less formal. Maybe take them out to eat somewhere, have it be a little more casual. You can still get a lot of questions in, but you get to see them in a social situation, which should help you as well. You will take a consideration then of both candidates and how they did in the second round, and hopefully you reach consensus on the candidate to move forward. And then that leads us to the last part of the process. Once you've decided on a candidate, you can work with your school attorneys to develop a contract. Some districts like to use us to be the middleman in getting the contract nailed down, because we've developed a rapport with both the candidates and the board. So we're happy to do that. Some boards don't need that. We'll help you make a public announcement if you'd like. We'll work with you on transition planning so that the new person can hit the ground running and begin some relationship building. And then our coaching process starts at that point. We're gonna tell you a little bit more about that later. The next slide is the timeline that all of this is gonna take place. This is just a rough draft. We would nail this down in that opening planning session. But basically, in about October, November, you can finalize your decision. If we were to get the search, we would immediately work with you on getting a contract developed. We'd post it on our website to get the ball rolling. We'd start some advertising and off we go. Come early part of November, most likely, we'd work with you on getting the survey up and coming in and doing those focus groups and coming back and presenting the leadership profile. Then in January, February, that's our heavy recruitment time. That's when Sheila will be looking nationally and Todd locally will be seeing how the applications go. And then February would be when you get quite involved and make your decision. And according to this timeline, you'd probably be ready to announce your new superintendent at your March board meeting. Again, we've done searches much more condensed, and we've done them much wider time range. We would work with you on what you feel most comfortable, because you know best where you're at and how you'd like to proceed. Our fee is $34,900. That's our flat fee. We give you some idea of some of the ancillary costs. These are ranges. It depends on the advertising, for instance. If you want us to be really aggressive nationally, it might cost a couple of thousand. Some districts say we'd like some national presence, but you don't have to overdo it. So we would work with you on that. There's no flying in or flying out, at least as far as we go, so that the travel would be low. And I just wanted to let you know, this seems to make boards feel a little bit better. It can be a little scary when the additional expenses are in flux. We will gladly work with you to put a not-to-exceeds number on expenses, and then you can have a very clear idea, and we could have a very clear idea. And that has worked out very well. We're gonna hit the home stretch then with Sheila. She's gonna wrap it up. And this last portion is kind of why us? You're probably gonna talk to a couple other firms. Their process is gonna be very similar. Why us? So Sheila?
Absolutely. If Green Bay area public schools, if you choose BWP to assist you with your superintendent search, three highly qualified BWP associates with over a combined 40 years of superintendent experience and experience in conducting over 60 searches will serve as your search team. BWP organizes search teams to achieve balance of talent and experience to meet the needs of the school board and to conduct a successful superintendent search. And as we stated earlier in the presentation, we are committed to recruiting highly qualified diverse candidates from within the state of Wisconsin and across the country. We have deep knowledge of the Wisconsin administrators' network, as you heard Todd talk about earlier, and a proven record of successful searches within your state, such as Middleton Cross Plains, Cedarburg, Grafton-Jefferson, Shorewood, and Madison Metropolitan School District. We have successful experiences in conducting nationwide searches, as I talked about earlier, in large school districts such as Chicago Public Schools, Prince Williams Public Schools, Arlington Public Schools, DeKalb Public Schools, and of course, Madison. In addition, we have demonstrated the ability to attract diverse candidate pool. In addition, we have demonstrated the ability to attract diverse candidate pools. Over the years, our diverse candidate pools have resulted in the placement of a significant number of diverse superintendents within states throughout the country. You heard earlier about our extensive network of colleagues that we have established throughout the country to provide you with the best candidates. We find out about potential candidates through our connections with various superintendent programs and attendance at numerous superintendent conferences. Perhaps even more valuable is our strong reputation among our clients and candidates as being professional and very conscientious in the search process. Meaning we are there with you every step of the way. You will have direct contact with us during and after the search process. Our goal is to build a long-term relationship with the superintendent and the Board of Education. We are committed to providing a customized search to meet the needs of Green Bay area public schools. And our BWP assurances, next slide please. We will be on call throughout the search process and the year following the selection of your new superintendent, as well as provide regular updates on the search to the board president as necessary. We will add a not to exceed clause, so there will be no surprise pricing or billing. We will mentor, coach the new superintendent and the board at no cost for the implementation year. And this is a BWP exclusive. We will repeat the search for expenses only if the selected candidate does not complete two years. We will not recruit nor replace a superintendent that we've placed in another search during the term of their initial contract. And that is why, these reasons are why we believe you should select BWP and associates to assist you in your search for your next superintendent of schools for Green Bay area public schools. And please remember, if selected, we will work very hard to bring you the best and the brightest diverse slate of candidates from which to choose your next superintendent. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thanks Sheila. That's our formal presentation, but we would love to answer any questions that we either didn't cover or you'd like a little additional information about.
I'll start with, with a question. How, how would you sell Green Bay to a potential candidate? How would you sell our community as a good place to come? Maybe even move across the country to take this position?
Todd?
I'd start with bullia, bullia. Right? So like, hey, can we get some of that? So they're asked, what is that? So I'd start there. It's, it's a, you know, Green Bay is, is a, as a progressive community. You have a referendum that you are currently planning to go to the public on and to address the needs of the district. And when you look at what you're asking the taxpayers to support, those are all areas that are focused on student success, student achievement, students developing a sense of belonging. You make decisions in the best interest of students. And that's what I would use in soliciting and gaining input or feedback and recruiting potential candidates from, from the Wisconsin area. The candidates, I can tell you that there's a few, as I just keep my network alive, knowing that I was coming to present here, there's a few that I had already spoken to that I know are not interested in other positions that would be open, but would be interested in this position. I would say that the draw is some of the diversity in the, in the community. You can see it in the student demographics and how they're changing. They're interested in that. So they are forward thinkers and they want to be a part of a progressive district that puts students' interest at, you know, on the forefront. It's a, it's a great community, not only the city of Green Bay, but you can expand and go out to, you know, the surrounding areas. It's, I think of Green Bay as beyond just the city limits. You know, you can draw on the St. Norbert's and, and there's a lot of St. Norbert's. There's a lot of different areas that you can draw upon that's, that you can use to sell the wonderful district that Green Bay is. It's, it's not a district, when you look at, a district has forty one schools. You know, you got twenty thousand plus students. This is, this is a very large district, fourth largest in the state. So this is, you want a strong leader who's going to embrace this and want to set up shop here for a time. I know there's been some turnover in the superintendents in the last few years. I get that. And superintendent, you want someone who's going to be here for a while. You're not wanting someone who's going to step in here and be here for a couple of years and then moving on. Your students and your staff deserve something better than that. Those are the kind of candidates that I'd be recruiting.
Go ahead.
Just for the sake of consistency, I'm just going to read number one verbatim from what we have and you kind of alluded to it on there as well. What kind of research will be done by you to learn about our district and our community? And also how will you obtain information about our community? And I know that you're familiar with the area, but also hearing from the other two people that would be working with us have selected.
Well, I think, can you hear me okay? I think that we will learn as we go more about the Green Bay area public schools by conducting interviews with you, the Board of Education, and as Joe said it earlier, your staff and also your larger community. We will be coming to you to ask you to identify groups, candidates, forums, however you want us to reach out to the community to get that feedback from them with those three questions. And that's how we would really get to know Green Bay. We will get to know it firsthand by talking to individuals that are either working in there in the school system, sending their children to the school system, those taxpayers that are interested in what's going on in, in your school system. We would like to speak to them and that's who we will talk to. Joe, you may want to add something to that?
We've already begun the research process. We start normally by really digging deep into your website and it's a good start. It gives us a foundation. We get even more information when we talk to our friends and colleagues from the area. Then you get a perspective of people who are here and live it and experience. We've already done those two things. And just to put an exclamation point on what Sheila said, where we really get our information is that day in the district. The survey is really nice. We get some good hard data. But when we come in and we meet with these focus groups, these groups of teachers and parents and community members, we just learn deep, rich information about your district. Todd and I are working with the McQuanigo School District on, in this process. And a couple of weeks ago, we did the focus groups. And I just thought I knew them pretty well. And when I left after that process, I felt like we know exactly what this, this town needs. And so we would do the exact same process with you all.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I have a question on something that you, from the PowerPoint. And it says mentoring of new superintendents. And you said that this is exclusive to you. Like, is this something that only you do then?
We haven't reviewed every search firm in the nation. But the ones that are our biggest competitors, they'll charge you for doing that. And we do that for free for an entire year. And we develop such good relationships from doing that, that I'm still mentoring somebody, four years ago, they hired him, but we developed a rapport and I'm a little more experienced than him and he calls me all the time. I bet Sheila has the same thing.
Yep, same thing happens with me. Yeah.
So we think, we think that it's fairly exclusive that we do that kind of mentoring with no cost.
And it's not just the superintendent, it's the board president. Normally that's usually the person that we stay in contact with or the vice president. And those relationships grow as well, you know, because once you get to know someone, you just don't cut it off at the end of the year. And so people pick up the phone and call with questions and things like that.
And one last fact to add to your question. We mentor whether they're, this is their first superintendency or maybe it's their second or third, but it would be their first one in Green Bay if they were an experienced person. Friday, a colleague of mine and I, we went out to visit newly placed superintendent. She had seven years' experience as a superintendent, but she had lots of questions. She had gone from Wisconsin to Illinois. And you'd think there wouldn't be big differences, but there were. And so we felt really good that, that she felt comfortable bringing those issues, even though she's an experienced superintendent. She took advantage of the mentoring that's there for her.
Go ahead, James.
Yes, I would just, I have a question about the survey. Three question survey. I'm interested in across multiple searches, how that has informed you differently across searches? Because I see, and when I think of leadership, I can name a couple of characteristics that I had a saying that would always appear, you know, and everything. So what really do you use that survey to do and how does it inform your search?
I'll start. The survey is more detailed than just three questions. It gets at the three questions, but it's a forced answer response. There's lots of options. So we actually get a lot more detail. We're able, it ranks which ones were more frequently answered down to the ones that weren't as important. So we're able to get a little bit wider range and a little bit more specificity in that survey.
Thank you. The depth of the survey clarified.
One other thing that I wanted to add about the survey, and I believe you, you may have mentioned this, Joe, was that, was that we do the survey in multiple languages as well. So that I thought would also be a plus for your community.
Don Smith, do you have any questions?
I guess, how has, how has COVID impacted this process for you? How is this? It's, I know that there are a lot of schools looking for superintendents in the state of Wisconsin.
Around the country.
All over. I'm really concerned about Wisconsin, but I, I know this, it's a national, I'm concerned about Green Bay, but I know this is a, COVID has changed things and the political climate in Wisconsin has changed things. And I, the thing that's been making me lose sleep is, you know, how this is going to look with everybody else that's looking for candidates? And, and how has that changed for you and has that changed your process? And have you had a lot of success since COVID? I know you gave us a bunch of schools in Wisconsin you have worked with. I don't know how recently that is and you know, what COVID has done to this process. The last time we did it was right before COVID, so.
Yeah. COVID was very challenging, but I have to say there were a few positives that came out of it. We continued to do searches because superintendents were still needed. And in the heart of COVID, we made our entire process virtual. And while you do lose that face to face, the process proved to maintain its integrity. And why I say it actually helped us is we found that when we were doing the focus groups in the district, we found even before COVID, we were getting fewer and fewer, like parents come to the evening after dinner, come out to one of the schools and talk to us. We'd be happy if we got maybe ten people come, even in a district your size. What we learned accidentally through COVID is when we offered the forums virtually, all of a sudden we had fifty people. And so we've actually been offering districts to do a hybrid where we'll come out. There are people who like to meet you in person. We'll do that. But then at seven PM, we'll offer a virtual one. And we even started offering virtual for teachers. Because you know, teachers, a lot of them have young families and they have to pick up kids from childcare and so on. And they couldn't come to a meeting after school. But yeah, they, they come at six o'clock and they tune in. So we've maintained some of what we learned through COVID. But to answer your question about what you lose sleep over, what we're losing sleep over a little bit is the candidate pools have dropped in number. Not critically, we, we have yet to have a search. We weren't proud of the six people we presented. But where we used to have a good twenty five people apply, now we're kind of hustling to get twenty. And so there's been a little bit, doesn't matter what state we're in, there's been a little bit of a, a more difficulty finding people because of a lot of things. COVID was really rough on administrators in particular. So a lot of superintendents have decided to all leave at the same time.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you paused. Sorry. Go ahead.
Did that go up? We have more people leaving than, you know, looking. So it's more of a challenge, but don't worry about it. If you select us, we have had successful searches before, during and after COVID.
Yeah.
Did you have any questions? Okay, that's fine.
Just out of consistency with it and for time's sake, I think we should probably just hit our six questions on, on this. I'll go ahead and ask a question too, if that's fine. Okay, how will, and you kind of alluded to this. Nice job. How will internal, how will internal and external stakeholders be involved with the search? And your role with the stakeholder process and what process will be used to sort the stakeholders' input to determine a leadership profile for the candidates? We kind of, you kind of hit on that before, but just kind of hitting those checkpoints on it.
Okay. Again, most of that we've covered through what we described as the process with the focus groups. We also, one of the things we'll talk to you about during the planning meeting is whether you want any additional stakeholder input throughout the process. Some districts prefer to just have stakeholder input on the front end, the, the focus groups and creating the profile. But if you so chose to have another opportunity for stakeholder input, perhaps after you've got the two finalists, we can help you organize that. We offer several formats that you can do that, but they all end up with this. It's your final decision. If there is any additional stakeholder input beyond just the beginning, it would end up being in written form and the board would read it. But there would be no open forums, open discussions, who do you like best? We have found that those do nothing to add to the situation and often disrupt it.
Okay, anyone want to tackle the next one? I'll, I'll go ahead and do that. And so, I mean, I'm sure that you are aware of the political landscape here in Wisconsin. So how will the current political climate in Wisconsin affect recruitment? Especially candidates from outside the state? And how will you sell Green Bay, which you've already answered?
Yeah, I did mention how we'd sell Green Bay. I can tell you that the conversations I'm having with candidates are much more thorough than I've had in the past. And it kind of gets back to, I think, a little bit with the question that Joe was addressing, how has COVID changed some of this? The candidates are being, they're much more thorough in doing their homework around, on school districts. So they want to know more about the board dynamics. They want to know what are the hot topics in, in, in the district. Superintendents are well-connected. They may be connected to some of the administrators here that are in the district and those who may make application may apply and want that information. And so when I'm on the phone with candidates, prospective candidates, I'm being transparent and talking to them about what's going on in the district and all the great things that are going on in the district and why the community is a great place to be. And so there's, there's nothing that I don't touch on that, that, that they're left to scratch their head. The political environment is probably one of the topics that gets discussed the most when I'm on the phone with, with candidates. And most candidates can zoom into a board meeting and watch what goes on and they can look at the archive board meeting. So they get a good sense of what's going on. So they want to know those types of things. They want to know the existing relationship between the board president and board members and the superintendent, those types of things. If I know that, I can speak to it. But a lot of times it's our relationship with the board that I can speak to. And Joe had alluded to McQuanigo, great relationship with the board. And so when I'm talking to prospective candidates, I can talk about that. They're a wonderful board. And so those are the types of things, real life experiences that I can, you know, share with, with, with potential candidates.
Laura, do you want to ask the next, the next question? Laura, do you want to ask the next, the next question? Number four.
Certainly. You talked about this a little bit about your recruitment. But what do you do to recruit diverse candidates, including gender, ability, linguistic, racial, and ethnic diverse to apply for our superintendent?
I think, can I, can I jump in there right quick? All right, one of the things that we do, and I, I mentioned it earlier, you know, we, first of all, we have this huge network of individuals across the country. And so we tap into that. And I think Joe said before, as he stated, the people that we're going to reach out to, they may not even realize just yet that they're interested in Green Bay. So we have connection with ALAS, which is the administrators for Latinos, Americans. And we have the NAPSE, the African-American Superintendent Association. We have those national networks. But then we also have the local networks as well that we will be tapping into. And once we get the profile, it will be easier to speak about how we would go about identifying those individuals. And it's usually, they're usually successful wherever they are right now. We will never bring you anyone that's not being very successful in the role that they're in currently. So we'll make sure that of that. Joe, you want to add something or Todd?
I can say just through my network here in Wisconsin, I've reached out to minority candidates, female candidates. And I've already, I'm building that network and want to make certain that network is alive and well. And I've done that already in anticipation. If all goes well, we get the Green Bay search. So I've already kind of activated that, that, that line of communication. And it's to individuals that you had mentioned.
And I, this is such an important question. I'm glad it's one of your six questions. I wanted to just add one thing. Remember too, that three of us will conduct your search. But we are part of a large nationwide organization. And if we were to get your search, one of the things we do regularly is we will send out your leadership profile to all of our colleagues. And hey, a new great search just opened up in Green Bay. This is gonna be a wonderful opportunity. Here's the profile. Send us the names of anybody you think matches up. So there's three of us doing your search, but there's an entire firm behind it.
Okay, we need to, we need to kind of start wrapping this up. So we have one more question. I'll just go ahead and ask, do you, do you take any steps to ensure that a candidate stays longer than three years?
You know, a lot of that depends on the match. If we bring you the wrong people that don't match up to the profile, it's not gonna be a long wedding. It's, this is, by the way, very much like a relationship. And so we put a lot of time into the match. And if we do a great job with the match, we have at least the foundation of a long relationship. And then I'd say the second thing we do, back to the mentoring again, we don't just place you and then you never hear from us again. Todd had this experience, you know, in, in his career where the only time he ever saw the search firm was when they did the search. You, we're like lifelong partners if BWP places you. So I think those are the two things. Sheila, can you think of anything else? That was a really good question I hadn't come across before.
I, I had neither, but I think you nailed it. You're absolutely right. Those are the things that we can put, we put in place, but it has to be the, we, we have to give you the right candidates to select from. And we have to see, we have to make sure that they fit the profile that we receive. That profile is so critical. Because if it's not a good match, they won't last three years. They won't last two years. It will be back, you're doing it again. But the important piece is that we get someone that matches your profile. And, and, and just because we have 20 people apply for Green Bay, that doesn't mean that the 20 people are, you know, are cut out for Green Bay. We have to make sure that we pick the right ones. And I think with our support that's ongoing with the board and with the superintendent, you know, it can't, it can only be a win-win.
Yeah, I'll just add, I'm, I'm looking for the candidate who want, that sees Green Bay as a destination district. Not someone who's coming in and they're gaining experience to something larger down the road. That's not what you're looking for. And I know that's what you maybe have experienced over the last few years. That's not what we're about. We're bringing in candidates that want to be here and see this as a destination district.
Okay.
Laura, I'm sorry, Andrew had forwarded me a message or a question, so if it's okay if I ask that, it's a very quick one. Can you confirm that you cannot proactively, proactive, actively, sorry about that, recruit current superintendents? So are you able to recruit?
Yes.
Yes, we can. We, we promise, however, that we won't recruit somebody that we placed at least through, whoops, through, you know, their first contract and beyond. For instance, we place a great person, they do an awesome job in Green Bay for three years. And then we have a search in a little bit bigger district, hey, let's go grab, let's go tap his shoulder. We don't do that. But sitting superintendents are fair game for recruitment.
And I'll add that my network, I am talking with sitting superintendents and just drawing them to the, drawing to their attention that this position is open. And if it's not you, do you know of someone? Because some superintendents, Joe had said, the best superintendents are not out there looking for a job right now. I mean, they're happy. And so if they're gonna move, they're gonna do their homework because they want to be just as happy in, in the new, in the new district. So it's important to know that, 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 that's the kind of network that we're looking at and that I'm working.
Okay. I think we, we have to move on. So, but thank you for your presentation very much. We'll be in touch. I'm not sure exactly what that will look like yet. But we'll, we'll make our way through our candidates and we'll, we'll circle back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Take care, everybody.
I will be, we're going to be taking the vote two weeks from today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Great.
Good night. Shake hands now that COVID's over. Thanks.
Nice job.
All right, thank you. All right, yeah, we should, we need to keep going. Yeah. Go ahead. I was just gonna say, if, if, if it's covered in the presentation, we don't have to ask the question on that, right?
Yeah.
Well, we. Oh, no, okay. Okay.
That way we're consistent with each one. So.
Okay, welcome. Hi, Dan. I'm very well. I think you've been in this room a few times. Yep, yep. Little, little face. Yeah.
Turn off anyone.
Okay. Okay, so we'll have to make sure we talk. There we go. Okay, so we know that you have an awesome task in front of you. And that is selecting the leader for your school district. And one of the most important things that you can do as a board. And so we are here representing the Wisconsin Association of School Boards to help you find that right leader and to be able to tell you a little bit about ourselves as the consultants who would be working with you and also a little bit about our process. First, a little bit about ourselves, myself. I'm actually, live in the Door County area, have been in education for over 45 years. Spent the majority of my career in the Oshkosh School District. So I'm very familiar with urban school districts, the opportunities that exist for students and also the challenges that communities sometimes face. While I was in Oshkosh, I was a classroom teacher, Title I Director, pre-K 12 reading coordinator, a principal. I supervised all of the principals in the school district. And my last job there, right before Act 10 hit, was serving as the HR Director. So after I served in the Oshkosh District for a number of years, the opportunity came forward for me to serve as superintendent in Southern Door, which of course is a rural district. But it was my hometown district where I graduated from. So it was an opportunity for me to return back home. With me this evening is Dan Neerad, who probably needs no introduction, but we will let him go ahead and tell you about himself. Dan?
Hello.
You have your own mic. Yep, you can go, you can go ahead and hit the button. That will cut off your mic, though.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
A little anonymity doesn't hurt. I don't know how much I have in, in this great community. So I'm Dan Neerad, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity to be with you this evening. And I've been with WSB for about four years following my retirement as a superintendent. What was important to me was to be able to remain involved with the kind of issues that were, I was involved with, but perhaps in a little different way. I served as superintendent here for seven years. And that was after having been in the district for 26 years before that. So I, I'm very grateful for that opportunity that very much shaped my disposition as a school superintendent. And from here, I went to Madison and I spent four years as their superintendent of schools there. And then my final superintendency was in Birmingham, Michigan, where I spent six years as their superintendent. So a whole variety of experiences, very much aligned, I believe, to the work that this district does. But you're, you have your own unique story, just as every district has their own unique story. So what does this mean if you would choose to select WSB as your search firm? So let me just provide you a little context from our perspective. Know that we have experience in working with districts like yours. And most recently, I, I completed a search in Kenosha, probably a couple of weeks old when that was completed. And I'm now finishing Beloit's search as well. That one's coming to a close as well. But more important, you know, is the understanding of the leadership issues that you face as a school district. Because obviously, this is about finding a superintendent, but it's more than that. It's about finding the, the leader that can align to your vision and your aspirations and your hope for the children that you serve here. So what's important for us is we bring a lot to you, but that's insufficient in and of itself. Because we need to understand what's important to you. So our work begins with our trying to understand that in terms of, you know, shaping, what are you looking for? And what will be important there is that we begin with that work. To be able to understand, you know, what you are looking for and what others in this community and school district are looking for, which I'll speak to in a little while. So clearly, our goal is to work with you to find a highly, the highest quality, diverse and culturally competent candidates. And I believe that we have ways that can accommodate those kinds of needs. So we will work with you. We have a defined search process. But what's important is, is that the process that you're comfortable with? So we can shape our work. Clearly, we'll present to you our ideas for process, but we can clearly shape that work based on what your needs are. And so let me just conclude before I go to this slide by telling you that there'd be nothing more important for us as consultants than to find a highly qualified candidate for you. And there's a lot of professional expertise that we can bring, but there's also a lot of personal reasons that this work would be important for us to do on your behalf. So what this slide is showing you here is we do approach our searches with a keen understanding that you are in a time of transition and leadership change. And you've just recently experienced some leadership changes as well. So, and so while that is the case, we also know that you have been purposeful about defining your aspirations as a school district. You know, that, in whether or not that's absolutely contemporary and current or if it's needs reshaping, isn't our point for putting it there? The reason why we put it there is it's important to find a superintendent that understands what you have defined as a school district in terms of your priority areas of focus. So you have a, a mission defined and you have strategic priorities defined. And whether those remain or not, because a new superintendent may work with you on new ideas and a reshaping of those priorities, which is, is not, not a problem from our perspective. But you need to start somewhere with that work. And so obviously, we would look to help you find a superintendent that understood what was important to you as a school district. So, but keep in mind, we understand that those certainly can change over time. And we also know that there are other critical issues you're facing as a school district. You have a referendum literally right around the corner. You know, what will that new leadership be able to contribute as a result of that referendum? And you also have, not unlike other school districts, you have budget issues that are defined as well. So what will that superintendent be able to do to help provide leadership around those critically important issues? So we'll go to the next slide then. So our approach does really emphasize that for you, in finding a superintendent, that's your most important task. And our role is to help you with that work. Please keep in mind that we view this search as your search. And we will bring you a process and we will work with you through that process. But what's important is that you are driving the search in terms of, you know, how this, you know, what you see as priority needs. So a key separator for us on this first line here is that we specialize in only placing Wisconsin superintendents. I mean, that is the work that we do. But one of the things I want you to keep in mind is you evaluate our work and you also evaluate the work of the other companies, is that the greatest majority of superintendents that are found by very, any searcher in this state come from this state. And so we feel that that provides us some level of, of advantage, if you will, because we have an understanding of the educational issues in Wisconsin. And we have an understanding of the superintendents that might match if it comes from within the state, if that person came from within the state. But having said that, we're not limited solely within the state with the work that we do. So let me just share with you, I'll try to do this quickly. And that is to identify a pool of candidates. We contact via email. We have a very rich database of people that have expressed interest in being superintendents. So we contact all of them. We post our, the superintendent search would be posted through a WSB LinkedIn as well as Facebook pages. And then we offer what we call, through, through the amount that's already in your budget proposal, a premium advertising package that would have posting at the Wisconsin School Leadership Career Center. And then regional advertising to thirty colleges and universities across a number of states. And finally, we post everything to all the CISA administrators, asking them to distribute it to all the superintendents in their CISA. But that doesn't speak to what we're able to do nationally. We are a member of a forty-state consortium. It's called NASS for short. And it stands for the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers. There are forty states involved with that work. And we share superintendent searches with each other. So we're able to tap into pools of candidates that go far beyond the, the state of Wisconsin. And I think that's important for you to be thinking about. We also, and it is not part of our proposal, but we do recommend that you consider, especially a district like yours, some additional advertising that in my experience have yielded some pretty good results. And so typically, what we're additionally recommending for a district like yours is the American Association of School Administrators posting. We're also recommending that Education Week, which is a well-known educational weekly newspaper. But more of it specific, we're also recommending that you consider the Association of Latino Administrators as well as the National Alliance of Black School Educators. Those in, from the searches that I've recently done have had a pretty good yield in terms of candidates that have been brought in. So finally, we are familiar with the search process and we have experience with working with boards like yours. And while I've indicated already, we do have a defined methodology that can change based on what you see as your priorities. So I've already, I just want to repeat this at the risk of being a little redundant. We do have experience in this state and fairly some new recent experience in Kenosha and Beloit as well, although I did the Beloit search a couple of years ago as well in finding superintendents in urban school districts. We've also done Appleton a, as well in the past. So, you know, we do have a number of resources that can help you be successful with your search. And then finally, before I turn it back, we'll go to the next slide.
Boy, this is a really fast.
Our process would lay out a number of search stages. And my bias or belief is they're not terribly different than what the other search firms may offer. They're, they're fairly similar. But we want to emphasize in our presentation here the planning, preparation and the engagement piece of, of the work. Because we think that that's critically important. So at the, this would begin with a planning meeting, should you choose us, and that the whole entire search would be laid out. You know, we would share with you what we felt was important to consider and it would be shaped i- in that, in that meeting. But following that, we would pretty quickly get into our area of engagement with stakeholders. And here, what we do recommend is a set of focus groups and as well as a, a survey, community survey. And those, those are particularly done for, for really two reasons. One is to shape the profile for your, for the advertising for your superintendent. You know, wha- what, and the way that is done is a search consultant would go through that process and then would present a draft profile to you. And, and then that would be worked on. And then that would be what would be used to tell the good news about what this district is looking for. The other thing that's important, the second thing, part of that profile work is being able to learn about the assets of the school district and the community. Because what would compel a superintendent candidate who didn't know anything about Green Bay to be interested in considering the Green Bay position? So you want to be able to share the good news about the school district and the good news about the community. And the goodness knows there's plenty of that here. And because, you know, most of, th- they come with family for the most part. They may come alone, but they still want to know, you know, what's it like to be hanging out in Green Bay? And, you know, wh- where are the things that I can get involved with here? So we think that that's an important part as well. And so with that said, we're going to go through some of the other stages with you in the remaining time we have with the presentation. I have to.
Okay. Okay. So as Dan said, our very first meeting would be a planning meeting. And that's really where you have the opportunity to customize the process and make it your own. We would bring lots of questions to you. We would bring samples, ideas of things that we have done in other districts. But ultimately, it's your call. It's your call as far as how we develop the posting vacancy. As Dan mentioned, you know, there are opportunities. You have some wonderful material that's already on your website. I believe for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, that's a fact sheet that has a lot of rich information. So it's how do we develop the profile to be able to put your district out there so that, as Dan said, people know what it is, what they would be applying for, and what are some of the unique characteristics? At that meeting, you also would decide, do you want essay questions answered in the application? We have, and we will pass this around. We actually have a resource guide that has sample essay questions in it, sample interview questions in it, samples of letters, of postings, of lots of things. Each one of you as a school board member would get this resource guide at our planning meeting so that we would walk through it, we would show you the opportunities that are there. Sometimes in the searches we've worked with, a board might say, well, I like this part of this essay question, but I'm wondering if we could tweak it to make it this. Absolutely, we can do that. We do the same thing with our interview questions. So I'm just going to pass this around so you can look at that. So we, during that session, you know, we recommend focus groups. Some districts decide to only do focus groups. They might choose five to six different kinds of focus groups and gather information that way. Some districts choose not to do focus groups and they want to do a community-wide survey. And what we are finding in some of the larger districts is they want to do both. Because there is certain kind of information you can get from face to face or doing a Zoom meeting with interested people who want to give their perspective as opposed to the kinds of information you might get if you do a community survey. So we would gather all of that information and then bring back to you as a board. Here are some of the themes that we are hearing from your community. Here are some of the criteria that they are looking for in a new superintendent. And of course, you have your own from the leadership end as a, as a board member. So a priority is really placed by our search process on that engagement and how you choose and how you want to do that. You also would be helping with the recruitment brochure. At the back of your handout, you'll see that we have one that was recently done in one of the districts that Dan just worked with. We can certainly do the brochure all by ourselves with the information you've given. In this particular case, WASB worked with the district. They had a public relations communications department and put together the brochure. Now what you have at the back of your handout is a miniature version of everything. It was an eight-page brochure and that was electronically put on the posting site so that there was information that could be shared with interesting candidates.
That was Kenosha.
So they're in that plan. I turn mine on. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Maybe we'll get it right by the end of the meeting, Dan. So we have the application period. And again, you are in control of how long you want that application period to be. Some people want it for just a few weeks. Some people want it much longer. A lot of it depends sometimes on the time of year. And, you know, do you want something coming in over Christmas break? Or do you want to extend it into January? We've given you a draft timeline, but that is at that planning meeting where we actually put some dates together for what you think would work best for your school district and also for your school board, because there are some meetings in between and what would work best. We do not recruit, we are a member organization. So we do not go out and recruit superintendents from other school districts in Wisconsin. As Dan said, WASB has a huge pool, I think it's like five hundred names of candidates that are out there that have either applied for schools or are interested in superintendencies in Wisconsin. And like he said, they are all contacted with just by email saying that this position is open. The other thing that we do, which is different, and I've worked with several other search firms, especially as I was HR in Oshkosh, is we do not hand-select and bring you a final group. You get every applicant that has applied to the Green Bay school system because it is up to you to read over those applications and for you to decide who you want to bring in. So we do not prescreen and select certain applicants out. We will be at a meeting with you. You would get those applicant information ahead of time. It is done electronically. There is a rubric that you can use to help you separate out which applicants you're involv- you know, you're interested in. And so those are all materials that would be provided for you to be able to access as part of this process. And then, of course, we identify interview questions. So we do that at that meeting when you're selecting the candidates because based on what you've read about the candidates, there may be certain questions that you want them to answer for you. Again, because of our expertise, even though we've got a multitude of questions in that resource guide, it is not unusual for us to craft some specific questions. All of our questions are vetted legally by our legal department. So if you come up with some new questions, that would be the case. We would vet them legally to make sure that they're appropriate for you to be using. So again, in the initial part, you see all the applicants. You get to select who you want to bring in for an interview. We then contact those applicants. We kind of work with you for how you want to do your schedule. And we schedule the first round of interviews. We are also there when those first rounds of interviews are held so that we can assist you with bringing the candidates in, assisting you with any of the information that you may need as you are doing those candidates.
If I could just add. Let me turn that, if I could just add. And it's already been emphasized, but I just want to reemphasize it. You know, while we feel it's very important for you to see all the applications and for you to be making the decisions about who you want to bring in for interview, that we will work with you through that process. And oftentimes, we do know things about candidates that are important for you to know. So we would bring that information in, share that with you and, and provide any advice and counsel along the way. So I just don't want to leave you with a sense that this is, you're kind of out there on an island. We would help facilitate and guide that process. But we believe underneath all this, this is your search and we're here to help you facilitate it and guide it.
So then when it comes to the final interview stage, again, we identify the final candidates with you as a board. Boards handle that differently. Again, that's where you can customize it. Sometimes boards will tend to have a stakeholder group that the final candidate also meets with and also meets with the board. Sometimes the board themselves just do it themselves and they'll do a stakeholder group at the first interview. And sometimes the stakeholder group is not involved at all. It's just the board making the decision. We conduct criminal, financial and educational background checks. However, when it gets down to the finalists, we do suggest that you do your own Green Bay Public School District background check as well. We assist you with questions or processes that you can do for reference checks once you've got down to your finalists and how you may want to do that. Let's say you decide you want to do site visits. You get down to two candidates and you want to do site visits. We would help you facilitate that as well. And we are here with those final interviews. So in the case of you're doing a stakeholder group and doing the board, one of us would be with the board and one of us would be with the stakeholder group. And so there would always be someone representing WASB working through those interview processes with you. Okay. So again, we assist you with the search. We ca- we also provide you with salary and benefit information, which is really critical when you're dealing with superintendents. We know that there's information that's out there through DPI, but that's typically a year old. And so what we get is the most current salary and benefit information and also try to do that for the candidates that are applying. Sometimes they include that information in their application. Many times they do not. But it also, we can assist you with an employment contract, although we know you have legal services as well. And you probably would not need that assistance, but again, that's up to you. And we can assist you in introducing the new superintendent if desired. But in a district this size, many times boards will choose to do that with their own communications department, but it's entirely up to you. Typically, our timeline takes three to five months in the process. And it is located on page ten in the, in the proposal I'll be giving you, but it's also at the back of your handout, the second to the last page. So you can see when you're looking at that. We kind of looked at, you were having your meeting today. And I think based on what we saw in the initial planning in October, you hoped to make your decision. So we started our timeline in November. But that can certainly be adjusted based on what you are dealing with as a school district. You know, if you want to wait till after the referendum or whatever works best for your situation. Again, that timeline is finalized in our planning meeting with the board. And for the most part, we're able to stay there. Every once in a while, there may be some things come up where a board meeting maybe has to change based on the needs of the district. And that's okay. We, we just work around that. So Dan's going to do a little bit more about why WASB.
And if I could just go to the final interview again, because you, you had mentioned the stakeholder group as one option, which is served to be a good option. But also what we've done as an alternative is forums, community forums where people can come in. The candidate presents themselves, five to seven minutes. Oh, you know, who they are as a leader, why they're interested in Green Bay to be superintendent. And then a series of questions are asked and you're provided feedback from those. Another option for you.
And some, and sometimes candidates too, you might choose be down to two finalists and one's going to come in, I believe this happened in Appleton, came in, spent the day at the district, did some touring of the schools, meeting of the staff, also met with the board. also met with the board and also had a community session, a forum like Dan was talking. So it's really up to you what you feel you need as a board, as well as what your community and your staff need.
So with this slide, chairs, is our view, and it's probably obvious, that WASB is more than a search firm because we offer a whole array of member services that I know at times some of you have taken advantage of. So on the right, you can see some examples of those member services. And we're not here to present on those this evening. But just to let you know that search is one thing that we do. But our goal is to be supportive to school boards and superintendents around the state. But let me emphasize the left side in terms of the guarantee that we do put into our contract. It's a two-year guarantee. Hopefully, it won't be part of your future landscape. But you know, obviously, you need to think about if that should be the case again. So there's a two-year guarantee. If that superintendent that you hires leaves before the end of the first two-year contract, that we will redo the search. There are some minor fees that are tied into that, but the majority of the cost for that redo are borne by WASB. And for that, we do ask that following the beginning of the work of the new superintendent, two, three months in, that there'd be a goal-setting, expectation-setting meeting that we would come back at no additional charge, not built into the contract that we presented to you to facilitate that. Because our bias is it's one thing to find a superintendent. It's another thing to make sure that there's good lift. And there's, you know, we don't enter this with a view that there won't be. But if we can be a part of facilitating that and for that, that's what that guarantee is provided. And that's done within the 12 months of the hire of the new superintendent. So I want you to keep that in mind. And then we'll go just to a couple more slides and try to bring this to a close. So our view is that, you know, our work is relationship-based. We want to work with you in a way that gets you the best results possible. And a lot of that really rests with us getting to know you and what your priorities, what your worries are, what your concerns are, and how can we best shape this search to make sure that we're responsive to that. So we do customize the search to meet your needs. And again, our work is specialized within the state. I've already shared with you my perspective that regardless of search firm that you hire, the greatest majority of found superintendents in Wisconsin come from within Wisconsin. And we do have a broad network of posting options to provide you. We do bring you all the applications as has been shared with you. And we will provide you support throughout the entire process, including that two-year guarantee.
So in closing, the relation. I got it for him, but not for me. So in closing, the selection of a new superintendent, of course, is the most important activity for your school board as a leadership team and also for your community. We understand and we have experience leading searches. And the most important part is that we want to work with you and we want this search to have the Green Bay stamp on it. So we want it to represent what's important to you, what you need, what you value and how you want it to go. And while we provide advice and counsel and you'll see the, I put in the search proposal, I happen to only live a half an hour away, so I'm here at your beck and call. We are here to help you make that important decision by the Board of Education. Dan mentioned that he has a long history with Green Bay. Some of you may not know, but I went to St. Norbert College and I did my student teaching at Ann Sullivan School. And my first year of teaching was a kindergarten teacher at two schools. In the morning, I was at Nicolay Elementary and in the afternoon, I was at Langley Elementary. And then I got married and got taken away from the district. But I had an aunt who spent most of her career in Green Bay. So we both have a fondness for Green Bay and for doing our very best to help you find the right leader. And with that, we will pass out our proposal to you. Our cost right now is we are estimating to be $16,200. It could be more if you decide that your, are extra things that you would like to have, but that would be our guarantee. But it could be less depending on, you know, what we do in our planning meeting. But that is our, pretty much our good estimate of what the cost would be. So if we could have you help with passing these out. And with that, we'll turn it over. I'm not sure how much time we have left based on when we started. If you have any questions for us.
We're going to try to stay on schedule a little bit here because we're kind of behind right now.
That's awesome.
We do have a series of questions and we'll try to, we'll try to go through them pretty quickly. Why don't you go ahead and start, Brian?
And you alluded to this, but we just want to make sure you have an opportunity to respond with it some more. What kind of research will be done by you to learn about our district and community? And then how will you obtain information about our community?
I think one of the benefits you have is people that have a good knowledge base about overall community. In no way, in my suggestion, given the years I've been away, that I understand all the current issues. So please don't take it that way. But we would learn a lot through the community forums, the focus groups about your community. Because what's important is to shape your profile off of what other people are finding to be important. So there'll be a lot learned, learned through that. We'll also learn a lot through the community survey about the community. And, you know, we do not, you know, reach out into the community beyond what we described in the proposal. But we feel what's in the proposal will help us gain a lot of current and contemporary information about the school district and the community. You know, those processes are just listening processes, especially the focus groups, which we would facilitate and we have a number of them built in into the proposal.
James?
Again, can you hear me? Just a direct question. I know you've already potentially answered this. How will internal and external stakeholders be involved in the search? Right? And what? Let's start there. So go ahead and answer that question.
They are involved in the search the way you would like to see them involved. So they can be involved through surveys. They can be involved through focus groups. They can also be involved in a stakeholder panel that might be part of the interview process. They can be involved in community forums where they are able to meet the candidate and ask questions and really get a feel and give you some kind of feedback with a tool as to what their thoughts were in experiencing that candidate. And then also, they might happen to be in the community and be part of a community tour that the final candidate might take.
There are two follow-ups to that question. The first follow-up, what will your role be in the stakeholder process?
We facilitate all of that. So we are there with the focus groups like Dan said. So if someone makes a statement, we will ask for clarification so that we can capture exactly what the intent of the comment was. We facilitate and do a summary of all of the community survey. But again, that's up to you. Some boards just want a summary. Some boards want to see the entire survey and all the comments and all the results. But that would be part of our planning meeting. And then when it comes to forums or interviews that the stakeholder groups would be part of, we would be facilitating that, setting up the schedules, making sure everything is taken care of, working with your wonderful assistant to make sure that coffee is there and, you know, beverages and everything is taken care of because that candidate's going to be interviewing you as well, right? And we want them to have a great experience coming into the district as well.
Last one, and this is maybe a novel question. What process will be used to sort the stakeholder inputs? So to determine a leadership profile that you described?
Yeah, I know. What is done for the focus groups, let's start there, is almost verbatim notes are taken for each of the questions. And then we use a process of looking at that full range of data. Because let's just say you have five focus groups, making this up now, two are with staff, three, two are with community members, one's with a parent, one's with a business community or whatever. What we do is go through a process of looking at themes. We don't report out, we never report out by individual because we want people to come to these to be able to speak what's on their mind. So we don't report out that way. And we typically do not report out by group, although we could do that because we're looking at themes that run across. And so what we would be developing a report that would be addressing those themes from those focus groups. And typically, I've done it and it doesn't have to be done that way. There are like nine questions that are posed. It's by themes by question is how we do that.
Go ahead. Okay, so you said that you don't actually recruit, right? You post it and then they come to you. So the word recruitment is in here, so just, it's the question. But how will the current political climate in Wisconsin affect recruitment, especially with candidates from outside the state? And how will you sell Green Bay?
You're going to help us. You're going to help us sell Green Bay, right? Okay, and we are both public school advocates for the state of Wisconsin. So yes, Wisconsin has some challenges. You referenced political, there's other kinds of challenges that Wisconsin has, but so does every other state in the nation. And what, if you are a leader and you are an educational leader, you will see some of those challenges as something you want to take on and that will not deter you from coming to a school in Wisconsin. So I think we're both very passionate about finding the right leaders for our kids here in Wisconsin.
And if I could just briefly add to that, in some ways, the superintendent market has been affected in the same way that other positions in education have been affected. And we can't let that deter us. You know, we have to be as aggressive in finding candidates as possible. So the no recruitment, it's not that we don't know candidates in Wisconsin that might be interested in Green Bay because oftentimes we will. But just keep in mind, the reason why we make that statement is because we can't go be knocking on the door of your superintendent and say, why don't you come and look at the Kenosha position and still be kind of this member organization that supports what everybody does. But don't, I don't want you to think about that as if we don't have information about viable candidates that might have interest. Having said that, in terms of the out-of-state candidates, profile is one thing. How that gets framed, I know it just kind of sounds like, well, everybody does a profile. But the framing of that is so important in terms of what are, what kind of messaging do you want to share about this wonderful school district and this wonderful community? But the other thing is, and this is getting a little bit ahead of it, but I would be, if we were selected, we would be proponents of that additional advertising as well that I talked to you about earlier. And I wouldn't be as strong about that because it's optional, it's entirely up to you if it hasn't been yielding things in the other urban searches I've been doing. So it has yielded a number of out-of-state candidates for the positions I've been involved with.
What do you do to recruit? Again, the, knowing that you do it a little bit differently, diverse candidates, attract candidates, including diversity in gender, ability, linguistic, racial and ethnic diversity to apply for the superintendency? And how successful have you been in placing diverse candidates, candidates with, from those categories in superintendent?
I'm going to let Dan go ahead and answer that because he particularly has dealt with that in the last two large urban districts that we've worked with.
Again, I don't want to be redundant, but I think a good reaching out approach through the resources I mentioned can go a long way in terms of attracting candidates. You know, so diversity is one thing, cultural competence is another. No matter who you hire, you want to ensure that there's cultural competence in those individuals. And that needs to be built into the interview process, if you will, to be able to gauge what that can look like. And so again, reaching out to defined and particular resources that represent different types of groups, I think are critically important. I can tell you in Kenosha, of the six that were interviewed in the first round, three were, would be representative of differences, if I can put it that way, without identifying what they are, you know, labeling what those are. But three of them of the six were brought in. And then in Beloit, for the first round, four of the six, I would describe to you were representative of the diversity of differences. And three of the four finalists there are representative. We're now going into the final round. So, I mean, I, you know, we, in the short term, we've got some good results. Whether that maintains itself, it's depending on what do you want to do, Green Bay? How do we want to reach out? You know, what can be most effective? What ideas do you have, Board? And let's go at it.
We have a tight schedule here, so let's try to move through this quickly. What criteria do you use to determine the slate of candidates to present to the board? Do you provide the board with all resumes? Why, why not?
I think we answered that in our presentation. So in the interest of time, yes, you get every single one that comes to you. And we do provide you with a rubric with the online applications that is up to you to use to be able to rank the candidates and to take notes as to what you have interest in each of the candidates. And like Dan said, and then when we meet with you, if we have some additional information, we certainly share that and are transparent with you about that.
Thank you.
And that comes the day after the closing automatically to you.
Okay.
All the applications.
Thank you. Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, the last question. Do you have any steps to ensure that a candidate stays longer than three years?
I think a lot of that, in my biases, it's dependent on finding a person that has that interest and seeing if you can sort that out in the hiring process. But in large part, my bias is that the road after hire is quite dependent on the board superintendent relationship and how that work is being done as a governance team, recognizing that you have different responsibilities and that, that, that the relationship is progressing well. Because not unlike other jobs, you know, people leave oftentimes if they don't see it being, playing out in the way they had hoped. And so I'm quite optimistic that quality governance and a quality board superintendent relationship can arrive at a lot, but it's additional work. I mean, it doesn't happen by osmosis. It happens by, by, you know, doing it purposely.
And we do find that the boards who have us back to do that goal-setting and expectations really value that. And sometimes they even have us back to do more governance things because sometimes the board that actually hired the superintendent doesn't end up being the board that's working with the superintendent. So it's very important to revisit that as you're trying to set that foundation for that great. And what we're seeing in some of the research out there is that successful districts that are achieving have very strong superintendent board partnerships.
Very good. That completes our questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, and we'll be voting on this in uh two weeks. So um it it will be in touch at that point.
That's how great.
Okay, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you very much. Great seeing all of you. Great being back. I haven't been.
Okay. Oh, we have a second. Okay, we need to get going because we're running very, very late. Okay. I have Mike Fuller and um why don't why don't you go ahead and and get started?
Hi, my name is Kristen Taylor. I uh work with McPherson and Jacobson. And I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Steve Joel up on the screen and he'll introduce himself.
Good afternoon, evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Steve Joe. I have been with McPherson and Jacobson for about twenty five years. I am a um retired superintendent for thirty seven years as a superintendent. Last twelve in Lincoln, Nebraska. And I retired in July and uh one of my passions continues to be helping uh boards of education and superintendents achieve success. And so delighted to uh present to you today. And we appreciate this opportunity uh very well. And uh very much so. So Kristen, do you, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Um, I am currently the Director of Human Resources for Oconomowoc Area School District in Wisconsin. I was previously the interim superintendent last year. Um, I have one more. This is my last year into retirement, so um wasn't interested in taking a full time superintendent job. But um my career has been for the last sixteen years searching for top executive talent for public school districts in Wisconsin. Um, and I come to you with about forty hires of directors, assistant superintendents and superintendents.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so uh, do I have permission to share screen? Yes, thank you. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity. So I've been uh, like I said, I've been engaged with McPherson Jacobson for about um twenty five years, done uh seventy five plus searches all over the country and have have really emphasized, at least lately, uh, the suburban and the urban area districts. Um, and and you can read, you can read up on us and and the work that we've done. As a firm, we did close to seventy searches last year. And I will tell you, we're on track to exceed that this year. It's no secret to you, uh, I'm sure that this is a this is a a market where there were close to nine hundred openings last year in the country. And um we think there's going to be nine hundred openings in the country. So uh it's really to your advantage to begin early and it's, I know you are. And you're you're a very attractive location and an opportunity. I've known Dr. or Steve Merely for for quite a while and I'm sorry to hear that he ran into some some health issues and then certainly uh feel, we feel badly for uh your current interim superintendent who uh who's on medical leave as well, too. Um, we believe, can you can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we believe in uh McPherson Jacobson. And I I guess just a little bit more clarification, we're under the leadership or the ownership now of Dr. Norm Ritter out of Colorado. Norm's been with the company for, I don't know, five to ten years. And um and I sit on the executive board and and I um I'm actually serving as interim CEO uh right now while he's out of the country. So we believe it's, this is the most important responsibility you have as a board of education. There isn't anything more important than hiring and working with and uh we're figuring out how to retain superintendents. The average tenure of a superintendent, by the way, in suburban America is about four point two to four point four years. And urban's about three point six. So one of the things that we hang our hat on in uh McPherson Jacobson is that we, our superintendents stay longer. I I don't think anybody in the country, any of the other firms can can really match up what we uh what we're able to do in terms of longevity. And you'll see why in a second as we go through our uh our uh presentation. So um we have uh Dr. Taylor i- is in Wisconsin. We have several other consultants that are in Wisconsin weren't able to attend today. I'll be involved in this search as well, too. I bring the national perspective uh through my work as a superintendent. I'm actually a teacher mentor in the Urban Superintendent's Academy through A double S A American Association of School Administrators housed at Howard University. Have a large network of of superintendents around the country, well known around the country. I I believe by by superintendents and candidates, too. And as you're probably aware, this is a recruiter's game, which means identifying what it is that you're looking for and then going out and finding the right people for that. But superintendents make or break school systems, we completely understand that. And um I can tell you, in every search that I've had, it's been a success. And we really work hard on the on the matching side. And oh, by the way, I might add that um in all the searches that I've done, and I believe Dr. Taylor would say the same thing as any of our consultants would say. What what would you get out of this search? Is a coming together as an entity and as a group. Because um I'm I'm seeing that. And the four searches I did last year, it was a coming together, people coming on boards from different backgrounds, some with different perspectives. Um, they're able to come together behind a a superintendent search. Um, it's not a magic bullet for for success, but it goes a long way because of the importance of the of the role. We don't hire superintendents, you do. And we represent you, we don't represent superintendents. Uh, we do recruit and then you can see in our numbers, you know, we're really proud of the fact that eighty five percent of our superintendents have lasted five years. And we put a guarantee to our search as well, too. So we like to start with the investment. So that you uh as we as we lead through this, you'll understand what the investment is. Um, we have a not to exceed amount, thirty three thousand nine hundred dollars. And this would include all of those things that are listed if you've got a copy of our proposal. Uh, you'll get phases one, two, five, and we'll describe those in a in a few minutes. Thirty days of advertising on American Association School Administrators. Um, by the way, our website gets close to a hundred thousand hits a month, yeah, about a month. And so uh we have a a database of close to two thousand superintendents that are registered with us. We'll uh we'll send a plurb out to them almost immediately upon being retained by you. Uh, thirty days on Ed Week on online and those are top A S A. And Ed Week are the are the two most common sites that uh superintendents are going to to look for uh those opportunities. Thirty days on the National Alliance of Black School Educators, six weeks on ALUS, which is Latino Administrators. Uh, we'll we'll go thirty days, uh single listing on the Wisconsin School Leadership Center. And this also includes two, two consecutive days of stakeholder meetings. And Dr. Taylor will discuss exactly what that entails, but those will be boots on the ground. And then we'll conduct online stakeholder input surveys, we'll do video interviews of those people who we believe uh most closely in line with what you're seeking. So that when we present those recommendations to you, you'll uh you'll actually be able to put a face to the resume. We'll talk more about that. Also includes criminal background check of of candidates, very important to do today, and travel expenses as well as office expenses. So the investment thirty three, not to exceed thirty three thousand nine hundred dollars, we feel very comfortable that we can conduct a very successful search uh with those parameters. So we have five phases to our our search process. And this is the work. And when you hire a search firm, um, one of the things that, you know, I would tell you, we're very, I think we do things consistently and and um and pretty equally, you're you're really, you're you're hiring the consultant. It it comes down to the relationship that their consultant has with you and and the transparency and the willingness of the consultant to work with your stakeholders, to work with your staff and to work with you, and then to be accountable for the uh for the end result. And uh we feel very strongly in McPherson and Jacobson that it really is about relationships. And uh I can tell you, if you check any of the references, I know that that would be the one thing that uh board presidents and school boards will say about the work that I've done, and I'll say the same thing about Dr. Taylor. So um let's go through the first five phases and uh, Dr. Taylor, would you take phase one? Or excuse me, I got phase one, apologize. So in phase one, you make the decision, uh, you know, assuming you make it soon. Well, we want to schedule a meeting in person with you, uh, both of us. We'll probably bring in the third member of our team if they're available. And we'll work uh with you to develop, uh, to mutually develop through consensus the desirable characteristics you're seeking in your next superintendent of schools. And um that that will, that will give us a um uh a head start then in terms of advertising and being able to start talking to prospective candidates with regard to what you're seeking. We'll work with you on timelines and target dates. Um, I can tell you that some districts right now, you're you're in, you're in the, you're in round one. You're you're starting today because you have an opening, you are going to get in front of uh fifty percent of the country. And and right now districts that are thinking about searches, um, starting when you are are thinking, you know, maybe we could wrap this up before Christmas, that would be possible or doable if if you were interested. Um, or you could go into January, but we'll work with you on that on those timelines. I already talked about the advertising revenues or the ad- advertising venues. But if there's more that that you would like to include, I mean, we certainly will work on that. So phase one, we start the process with you and you'll get to know us, we'll get to know you. And we will uh, we will begin the advertising and the recruiting. Um, but phase two is very important as well, too. So, Dr. Taylor.
So then after you have your characteristics defined, it's our time to start involving other stakeholder voices. Um, this is really important to be transparent and make sure there's plenty of opportunity for your stakeholders, teachers, administrators, parents, business leaders. Um, every employee in the district has, should have a opportunity to have a voice um in in um the selection process. Um, we hold stakeholder uh input sessions, we ask them four questions. One is what's great about Green Bay? Why would one, why would someone want to come here? Um, the second one is what's great about Green Bay area schools? And um a lot of this information helps us advertise and recruit the right candidate. Um, the next question is, so what issues or challenges do you think the next superintendent might face? Um, a lot of those are very common to urban districts across the state and some of them would be unique to Green Bay. And then um the last thing, the last question, I can't remember the last question, Steve.
Um, you, what are the issues that the candidates can be, superintendents can be facing when they hit the ground?
Okay. Um, and then um we write that, we take notes through all of those stakeholder sessions and we give you everything everybody said. Um, sometimes names are blacked out just to, we don't want this to be a an an opportunity for somebody to get a right hook from the out of the blue or anything. Um, but for the most part, you'll see themes in those things. You'll also have a survey that are the same questions so that working parents or or um people who can't attend the scheduled sessions have the same opportunity for input. We publish that in a one um document, that's a stakeholder feedback. Um, you will use that stakeholder feedback when you get together and try to um create the brochure that we're going to use to advertise. Um, that brochure is about um is your selling points. What are your demographics? Um, how many schools do you have? What are, what are your district accomplishments? Um, the criteria, selection criteria that you have developed. Um, we'd like to on that brochure put right out on the timeline so candidates know exactly what to expect. The worst thing we can do is leave candidates out there hanging and then deciding they don't want to participate in the process anymore. Um, and then in that brochure, we also outline the procedures. Um, so then we develop a vacancy announcement and we post the application in all of those fabulous places that Steve described. Um, and then we start our real work. Our team across the nation starts recruiting. We use the characteristics you're looking for. Um, we spread the word, we we headhunt, we we knock on, uh, tap on shoulders. Um, every candidate, that potential candidate that we talk to, we also ask, do you have, do you know of anybody else who might be interested? Um, so that you get a really healthy, vibrant pool of candidates. The last couple uh searches that I have done in Wisconsin have had between thirty and forty highly qualified candidates. And the school boards needed to um make some difficult decisions between some top candidates. So um that's our hardest work is to make sure that we're recruiting and out there beating the sidewalk for you. And um and then also on the other end, making sure candidates are informed if there's a delay in the process or um where we are in the process and what's next for them.
Thank you.
And then.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Steve.
No, I would just add two things. One, uh, school boards really appreciate the feedback they get from the summaries. It's almost like a little needs assessment, right? And it's an opportunity for you to know how your work is being perceived by your your very important critical uh stakeholder groups. And then secondly, we have relationships with an awful lot of people in Wisconsin, Illinois, surrounding areas, association leaders. And they'll help us recruit as we'll ask you, when we start working with you, have you come across a superintendent in Wisconsin? That or while you were attending a national conference that has impressed you and we'll follow up on every one of those leads. Um, okay, so that's phase two, we keep all the applicants informed. Phase three, Dr. Taylor.
So now you have all of the um, we we get all of these applicants and we go through each applicant. And like I said, we could get up for a district this size, we could get forty upward past forty. So the whole team gets involved and we do a lot of vetting. Our goal is to make sure that the candidates we bring forward to you are fully vetted and there's no surprises. Um, we bring the top candidates with their applications, you'll see their their introduction video. And um you'll decide how many of those candidates you are interested in interviewing. And then we use the stakeholder input and your characteristics. And um we put that information together to help you design interview questions that are going to um help vet out the right candidate for your district. So um really important to know what your big characteristics are. But then those um stakeholder, that stakeholder input really refines and helps you decide how you're going to vet out what the candidate hat um understands about that characteristic or how they demonstrate it.
And and we'll, we'll work you through a process to develop those interview questions. Every set of interview questions are specific to the district we're working with. We don't pull from a We don't pull from a bank. So you'll have an opportunity, we'll ask you, give us three or four questions you would like to ask a superintendent candidate. And then we'll make sure that those are are legal.
And that's where I come in with all of my HR experience. I help you make sure your, your interview process is legal and above board and properly posted and all of that nifty stuff. And then also we could keep in communication with the applicants that are not selected through the first round. And some school boards like to keep some in reserve just in case so we don't notify them until later. So but that's the real work worth that we are doing for you behind the scenes. So that you know the candidates you're actually spending your time with and considering are high quality, very thoroughly vetted candidates.
And then phase four, we're ready to to bring you the candidates. Go ahead, Dr. Taylor.
Yep. So we'll, we'll have met and we'll have selected the interview questions, we'll review those and make sure that's still what you want to ask before the interview. We'll decide as a board and tell us what to do with how you want to interview the candidates. And what that looks like logistically. And then we'll also do a little training on the interview so that you do that legally. We'll coordinate any meetings that you want to have if you, for a second interview, if they, if you want your candidates to come in and spend a day in the district, visiting schools, getting to know Green Bay and what's special about Green Bay. And and then meeting with, probably with some stakeholder groups again. And designing some sort of feedback system for that stake, those stakeholder groups on, to provide feedback on your final candidates. Remember, you're the, the school board is the one, is the entity that makes the final decision. And actually hires the superintendent, but you want to make sure you're considering feedback from your most important stakeholders.
Thank you. There's just a couple more in there and you know, we, 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 our communication, I think, is second to none. Our candidates really appreciate that. And then we don't, we don't pull any punches, just like on the front end, we're clear with them on what the expectations and or challenges are. We're also clear with them when they, when they're not selected and they appreciate that. I'm really proud of phase five, primarily because I was the one that brought it in the company about twenty years ago. Think this is a difference maker in, in the work that we do. And and I would just implore that regardless of whatever search firm you go with, you need some form of an opportunity to team build and develop mutual performance objectives with your new superintendent, without question. This is, this is why we're able to put a couple year guarantee to it. Because we'll come in three, one month after your superintendent has worked. And we will work with you and them to create that first set of mutual performance objectives. And that really is what's the, what's the superintendent going to prioritize? And I've done hundred of these. In fact, I did about seven or eight this summer. Even with districts that didn't go through superintendent searches that were just interested in increasing and improving the communication between the board and the superintendent. And I can tell you, we emphasize relationship building, but we really emphasize performance, too. And many districts that I've worked in then take this as a, they do it annually. But they take this as an add or a supplement to their state required evaluation process. And so it isn't about looking good, sounding good, doing good. It's really about how can you, how can you articulate the performance measures that we agreed to do in July? And how is that year gone? So I'm really proud of phase five and I love doing that work myself because again, thirty-seven years as superintendent, I think I've done it every single year with our boards. And it makes all the difference in the world and it does increase longevity. Okay, so and we have some additional services here that, you know, we always put it in the slide if you have an interest in it. I mean, we don't really like to negotiate contracts, but we can certainly help you negotiate a contract. It used to be in the day, boards wanted to go visit districts where if it was a sitting superintendent, we can make arrangements for that. If you have an interest in doing that, we can work on the job description. If you'd like to do that as well, too. Timeline, you know, we, we, we like to to say that from the time you hire us to, and and we begin to work with you, we, we need about two and a half months to do a stem to stern search. And you know, if we can get three, that's great with, you know, depending upon where the Christmas holidays sit. But candidates need about four or five weeks to do the research on your district. And then also to complete the application process and gear up for, you know, a potential interview if they're of high quality. I talked about the investment, I just want to show it up one more time, thirty-three-nine gets you all five of those phases plus a two-year guarantee. And with that guarantee, here's what it means. If for any reason, the, any reason, the superintendent is not, leaves, departs the district before the end of the two years, we'll come back and and do the search free of charge. And and you're probably, somebody in the room is saying, well, why would we want that? I mean, that means you didn't do a very good search. Well, we've had, as you experienced, we've had several, not, not many, five or six superintendents in the last twenty years that have gotten sick. That have had some major family issues and we just want to make it right. We reinstitute the search, we don't charge anything. And we'll get you the right superintendent time. So here's what we, we, this is what makes us different. Nobody's, we're very transparent and we know that. And, you know, maybe to a fault. Our, our, our superintendents stay quite a while. And then your stakeholders, because we are experienced superintendents and and educational leaders, your stakeholders will really appreciate the fact that we are acting in your behalf and and truly valuing their, their input on this superintendent search process. The other thing I would say again is the relationship with the consultants, you know, we get really high marks with that because we make that a priority with Mac and Jay. I talked about our belief statements, you know what those are, and that's our five phases. We'll stop there and answer any questions that you might have. Oh, one thing I would add. I've been to Green Bay a number of times, as probably most have. I don't know if you're familiar with Initiative One, Fred Johnson's company transformational leadership. I was part of a a group of about fifteen people from around the country that was trained to transformation leadership four or five years ago and just really enjoyed the Green Bay community. Of course, I had to do all the touristy things that Lambeau Stadium do and, you know, get the selfies with the statues and things like that, but heard a lot of good things about your school system. We know that that you, you know, you, you're going through some changes right now, but at the end of the day, you're declining enrollment, that you're suffering and, you know, which hopefully the next superintendent can be a you know, a real catalyst to make sure that, that if you're, if you're not, if you're not getting the kids you are, finding out the reasons that you are. And then working on strategic thinking and strategic planning and, you know, making sure that you're all focused on the most important thing, which is the highest quality of education for every single one of your children, every single day. So we'll stop and we'll listen and try to respond.
Okay. We have a series of questions that we've asked all the candidates. And so we're just gonna make, we're desperately behind schedule. So we're gonna, I, we don't want to deprive you of, 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 of time, but we are going to maybe move at a brisk clip here. So how about if we start with Dawn Smith? Dawn? Dawn, can you hear us?
Yes.
Can you go ahead and start the question process?
What kind of research will be done by you to learn our district and community? And how will you obtain information about our community?
It's possible that you've already answered certain parts of this. So if, if, if you feel like you've done that, please go ahead and say that and we can move on.
We have, boots on the ground, that's, we're gonna learn a lot, we're gonna, we're gonna be all over your websites and read, we're gonna interview your executive staff, we're gonna, we're gonna work with you. We will have a wonderful sense of your district, your district's culture and because that's important in the recruitment process.
Okay. Laura?
How will, how will internal and external stakeholders be involved with the search?
We treat it, we treat internal candidates exactly like we treat external candidates. Without exception, they'll be duly vetted, they go through the same process. And if they're, if they don't have the skills, traits, characteristics that you and the community are looking for, we don't advance them. If they do, we do.
As far as input from stakeholders, they are, everybody is treated the same, they have the same opportunity for, for input. Depending on how large the group is, it's the amount of time, amount of sessions you schedule. And and making sure that those sessions are scheduled for, for real people and real lives. You know, scheduling parent meetings in the middle of the day is probably not your, your best choice, but we'll have as many listening sessions as necessary and then provide that other opportunity with the same questions online.
And there's a little bit more to the question as well. What will your role be in the stakeholder process, which you kind of touched on? But what process will be used to sort stakeholder input to determine a leadership profile for the candidate?
So when all of the input will be put together underneath the, the question that was asked. And then when we get together as a team, I'll go through and highlight the themes that came out under each one. Whether they're positive or negative or whatever they are, we, we highlight the things that come out multiple times and in multiple ways from different people's perspectives so that you know what those themes are before you start selecting interview questions.
And my humble apology, I jumped in front of that question to expedite the process because of the time. And and I had it wrong. So thank you, Dr. Taylor.
It's fine. So I'll move on to the next question. How will the current political climate in Wisconsin affect recruitment, especially with candidates from outside the state? How will you sell Green Bay?
Okay, so getting that question in every presentation that that we do. Superintendents know the challenges today. And and I will tell you, there are an awful lot of superintendents that have successfully navigated the pandemic that are looking for another opportunity right now. Primarily because they've, they've obtained a lot of baggage in the district that they're in. You know, we're not really dealing with pandemic, but the politics are, are tough and they're difficult. And for us, if the board is united and the, and the, and the staff and the community are really into doing the best for their kids, superintendents are going to be willing to, to start over, you know, in a place. So how are we going to sell Green Bay? We're going to sell Green Bay exactly as you sell it to us when we come in and start working with you. But but I will tell you that superintendents have a lot of choices. So we need to be able to tell a really good story of, yes, there's challenges. Yes, there's been some disruption. Yes, there's, you know, some, some difficult politics. But sitting superintendents are experiencing that everywhere in America.
Thank you. Andrew?
What do you do to recruit diverse candidates, including candidates of diverse gender, ability, linguistic, racial and ethnic diversity to apply for a superintendency? And how successful have you been in placing candidates among these diversity categories in superintendent, or representing these diversity categories in superintendent positions?
I can speak to that because I think that's more of a national question. We've had a lot of success with it. You know, if you go back to the advertising venues, you know, we got ALAS, we've got the African American administrators group. I'm a member of a couple of different groups myself where there's lots of diversity. And and I will tell you, you will in all likelihood have diverse candidates. So we've had a lot of success bringing forward, districts don't always select them. But the ones that have been selected have done extremely well. And, you know, I can I probably shouldn't, but I could point to a number of districts pretty quickly that I think have been very, very pleased with the diversity, diverse candidates that we brought forward.
Okay.
Okay, what criteria do you use in determining the slate of candidates to present to the board? And do you provide the board with all resumes, what, yes or no? And why not?
Second part, yes, you get all the resumes. We'll bring them all the day of the final presentations. Criteria that we use, who most closely matches your criteria? And then do they, do they pass the, the background vetting check? Are they who they say they are? We go, we go a little bit deeper than, each one of them has produced three written references. We, we contact those references, but we go a couple of deep beyond them and we ask the simple question of a reference. And oh, by the way, in Wisconsin, we're gonna have a lot of contacts with a lot of people that are going to know about these folks, if they're from the Wisconsin, Illinois or Minnesota areas. And so, so that's what we do. We, we just, we go after it that way and we, we will do, Dr. Taylor and I and and the rest of our team, we will, we will, we will, when we get ready to be serious about who are the, let's say, five to seven or five to eight that are most closely in line with what you're looking for, we'll do a forty-five minute preliminary interview with each one of them. And because we are superintendents, we know how to do that interview in a way that gets us the information that we need. And that will be another layer of, of effectiveness that that we have. And then we'll bring you the video interview. We, we will orally describe what we discovered because we don't want a written record of that and in the event that in the likely event that there's going to be baggage. And oh, by the way, any super, sitting superintendent in America has, has some bad social media posts. And, you know, I mean, our, our job will be to find out what they are so that you know. Because the last thing in the world we want is a headline in your local newspaper that, you know, so and so just declared bankruptcy or something like that. So that's what we do. And then if you decide that you want to interview four people, we bring you five, we bring you six, we'll work you through a comprehensive consensus building process again in which you'll narrow down to those four, three or four that you'd like to interview. And we always like to recommend three is ideal, four if we've got a great slate. And as Dr. Taylor knows, the better the slate, the tougher your job, the better we feel about it.
I would just add that we don't just check the references they provide us, but references that references can give us and kind of around the, well, if they worked here, then these are the people that should know them. So we don't just surface it, we really dig deep so we know who it is we're bringing to you.
Okay, go ahead, James.
Last question. Do you take any steps to ensure that candidates stay longer than three years?
Well, do, do we take steps? Yes.
I would say the first part of that answer is making sure we have a match to your college career and community ready mission or vision and making sure that the, the candidate characteristics align would be your first step to make sure this is somebody who fits here and wants to be here and wants to do that important work with you. And then I'll let Steve answer the rest of it.
Yeah, so, so two things that I tell young super, new superintendents. Every time I work with them, as recently as, I was in the state of Delaware talking to superintendents a week and a half ago. Here's what I, here's what I tell them that they need to do if they want to stay someplace a while. One, make sure that, that when you take the job, you put in your contract that the Board of Education is going to commit to a robust, high-quality superintendent appraisal process. Right? That's going to guarantee communication, good communication and, and two-way feedback. Two, that the board will commit to one or two board retreats each year to establish goals, team goals, board and superintendent goals merged together year two. And then some team building. Now, from your end, we would always suggest do, do a multi-year contract. And 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 just, if you do that and the superintendent performs, extend it. And then you'll see that the superintendent comes back. But one of the things that's happening around America, there are about thirty superintendents in the country that were ones and dones this year, right? They got the job and they were either asked to leave or their spouse told them, let's get out of here. Or they just made it the decision, this was not what I expected. And I can tell you this, and I would guess in every And I can tell you this, and I would guess in every one of those cases, when they were hired, particularly it was late. There was very little commitment on the part of the board to work with the superintendent to craft the high-quality work that needs to be taken place. You, you'd be shocked how many board, how many boards, systems don't have current strategic plans that are visible to all. So put a five-year strategic plan in place, do a couple of board retreats every year. Have two-way communication through the appraisal process, compensate fairly, your superintendent's going to stay a long time.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I don't, I think that's it. We're going to be making this decision in about two weeks.
Okay.
Um, two weeks from tonight, we'll, we'll take a vote, we'll reconvene and take a vote. Um, and thank you for your presentation. I think that's all we have for tonight. Yep.
Well, we, we're, we're excited at the opportunity to work with you. If you have any other questions, you know, to get ahold of us and, and regardless of whatever direction you go. We wish you the very best in the future.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We need to adjourn our special meeting. Uh, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Okay. We're up and going. Uh, welcome everybody to our regular board meeting, uh, for Monday, September twenty-six, twenty-two. Do we need to do the roll call again? Okay, um, Kinsey, can you help us with that? Smith?
Here.
Becker? Andrew is excused. He had to leave. McCoy? Here. Leighton Warren? Here. Welch? Here. Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Thank you. Um, we are joined tonight by our interim deputy superintendent, Judy Wigan. And we are also joined by two, uh, students from inner city student council, Journey Freilich and Beva Winkler. Um, and we're going to, let's see here. If you would all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have our mission statement. Go ahead, Nancy.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. Next is our land acknowledgement statement. We, the members of the Green Bay area public school district, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Monominee and Ho-chung nations. And the current homeland of One Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations. Who have persevered here since before recorded time. And continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities. All right, next on our agenda, we have the inner city student council report. Go ahead, guys.
Hello, um, we had our monthly intercity student council meeting last night. It went very well. We discussed our bottled water drive that should be starting up soon, hopefully in the next month. We had a soft launch at Preble that didn't quite work out, so we're hoping to get any rough ends smoothed out soon. Um, as far as good news goes, East had their hallway decorating for homecoming this past week. And their upcoming pep rally should be pretty exciting. Um, at Shadeall, they had their opening week cookout and have implemented their new schedule due to growth in student population. And it's running very smoothly and the students love it.
Okay, um, good afternoon. So at Preble tonight and at South with their both having out their homecoming week, which you know, includes their festivities and all their fun stuff. Um, I know currently Preble is having like Spirit Week and their parade, um, and then. Their soccer team, their golf team are having very good seasons so far this year. And then for Southwest, the volleyball team is doing well and the cross-country team has also been very, doing well. For West this year, we, for West, we started this new Native American club, which is exciting for some, especially since I'm native, I enjoyed that. Um, and then we also have a boys volleyball team that's been started as well, which I think is great for gender equality. So that's awesome. And then we've also started up efficiency again. This is our second week going into it and so far it's been doing very well.
What was that last one?
Oh, our efficiency, we, we started it up this, like, last week and it's our second week we're going into it and people have been doing it correctly and it's been quite good.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, um, we've had more students actually sign up for it and follow through on it than we did last year. We have this new page where you fill it out, you talk about your day, and then you put down like what your assignments are, like what your. Efficiency assignments are going to be for that week, which has been proving that students are actually doing it and just have to with that whole getting it done.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thanks, guys. All right, next we have our public forum. Is there anyone who was hoping to speak during our public forum? Okay, looks like nobody. All right. Um, then the next is our consent agenda approval. I would. Let's see here. I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda. Would anyone like to read that motion?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I am not seeing where we would read it, so.
Right next to, uh, recommended action.
I'm going to pass that.
Okay, I think it's, I think it's, 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 oh, go ahead.
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
Do we have to do a, of, um, a vote? I'm sorry? Oh. Yes, any discussion? Sorry. Yeah, I believe so. Online voting is now open. It's not coming up for me. Is anyone else in the same situation?
It's just you, Laura.
Well, I'm, I'm going to vote yes.
You're going to vote yes?
Yes. I'm signed in.
All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Just bear with me a moment here. I was in, I was in the last meeting instead of the new meeting. Um, okay. Next is, um, number five discussion. And we're going to be talking about the impact of reassessment of city property. Um, on Gbaps pending referendum, if we could, um, I think Josh and Ian G are coming to the, and Sarah are coming to the table. Hey, guys. I'll just start by saying that, um, we had a couple of community, um, input events last week at Preble and at West. And in those, um, conversations, it became pretty clear that our community is, um, at least the people that were at these meetings. Had a fair amount of anxiety about the recent, um, reevaluations, uh, that the city did regarding, uh, uh, people's, uh, homes and properties. Um, so I requested that we have on our agenda tonight, uh, have an opportunity to talk about that. And, um, and ask questions and maybe get a little clarity about what might possibly happen and what. What definitely won't happen with regard to these revaluations of, of property. Um, did you guys prepare anything or are you just, are we just going to do a question and answer kind of thing? So, okay. Um, I will, I have some questions, but if you guys have any, why don't you all go first? Then anybody? Go ahead.
I really don't have any questions because I was at one of those meetings where you spoke. And I think maybe if you just say that again, so people who weren't at one of the meetings, they could hear that explanation. I thought it was real good.
Go ahead. Yes.
Um, so it, it's important to note, um, as you know, the district has revenue limits, the city has levy limits. Um, they can only levy an amount up, I'm simplifying it, but an amount up to what their net new construction is. Um, after the meeting on Tuesday night, I did look up their estimated net new construction is point five five percent. That gives them about an additional three hundred and eight thousand dollars in levy on a fifty-six million dollar levy that they had last year. Um, what that means is, you know, even if your property value went up forty percent. Your taxes cannot go up forty percent. That's, it's not financially or mathematically possible for that to happen. Um, some people may see it rise simply because if they went up forty percent and their neighbor went up twenty percent. Or the average was twenty percent and I don't know what the average was. Um, they may see a little bit more in taxes and somebody who had less than the average would see a little bit less. But it cannot be double or even, you know, a forty percent increase.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Brian.
Well, obviously we're not responsible for the city's budget or, you know, how that ties into the referendum. I would assume that's similar with other government agencies as far as the county having similar limits. And other educational groups like NWTC that has, um. Budgets that are impacted by it, that, that's kind of across the board, just that's how Wisconsin does financing for governments and schools and. Technical college boards and stuff.
That's correct. Um, you know, I think, I guess I can't speak for the technical college, but I do know the county has a levy limit. Um, and, and I do, and I want to be clear, and I, I think you were saying that, I'm not speaking on behalf of the city. The, the information I have is just, um, from experience that I have in municipal government. So not speaking on behalf of the city of Green Bay at all.
We, we understand that. Um, anybody else? Go ahead, James.
So my concern is that we sent out flyers or we papered the city explaining higher mill rate in terms of thousands of dollars or valuation. Um, and I know that so I put out a message kind of, you know, after the assessment, here's some reality and it's not what you think. Uh, I'm concerned after I read that, it never really came out and directly said, don't do simple math. Right? We, you have a piece of paper that says eight twenty-four per thousand. You can't take your assessed value and do the math and come up with a shocking new tax amount out there. And I were, I'm interested if we can field test or get some feedback on the language we put together. To see if it's satisfying the community's anxiety because honestly. I read it and it really, I, I felt like it kind of bounced around and maybe it's because we have to be very careful with our language and those. But it never directly said, don't do that, right? You know, the information that you, um, have in your hands requires interpretation. And you can't just go and do math out there. And so I'm very concerned that if we don't get in front of this, we're going to go into the referendum. With a, a, a population that's not really well-prepared to make a good decision. Because it's, it's not as bad as it seems, so.
Yeah, I think to speak to that, James, I agree. So when we, when we put out our mill rate, right? So we have to remember that we are separate from, from what other taxing jur- jurisdictions are doing. So for one, we have to keep that in mind. The other difference is the fair market value, right? So we have our mill rate is based on, you know, fair market value. And when we send that information over to, to the city for the levy, they then convert that to an assessed rate. So if you look on your tax bill, which is very confusing. You ca, you don't even see the district's mill rate on your tax bill, right? You don't, you don't even see the eight twenty-four, you know, that we're, that we're promising to go from nine oh three. So I think that that's a distinction that can confuse people. And of course it's confusing because we're fair market value and city's doing assessed, right? So, so those two things can be confusing and to your point, um, you're right. When we talk mill rate, we are decreasing the mill rate from nine oh three to eight twenty-four. And most likely it's going to be even lower because we have seen unprecedented increase in our fair market value. Last year, right, our equalized value, um, for property was about eight percent on average. We saw fourteen point four percent. So we are in also a market that is not, right? It's not the best market for us to be selling a referendum, right? Because there's so many things that people are, are really have anxiety about. And we understand, right? We're, we're dealing with inflation rates, we're dealing with all of that at the same time. But I think we can confidently say that even though our mill rate is, is dropping from nine oh three to eight, right? That doesn't mean that your, your property taxes are going down necessarily, right? And I think at least we've been transparent about that. Um, mill rate is different than your personal property tax bill. So you may see an increase because of the fourteen point four percent that everybody's property just went up, right? On, on average. So I think that those are also good talking points out there. But again, we're definitely and, and haven't promised that your property taxes are going down for at least the school district. It's our mill rate that, that really is dropping drastically, actually, right? Over a dollar.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
And wait, can I, can I add on to that point, um, before we move on? Um, the fair market value is literally a different number on your tax bill. Um, and those numbers have been mostly keeping up unlike assessed values, right? There hasn't been a major reassessment in, what, almost twenty years, maybe twenty years? The eighteen years, the, the fair market value is continually. Revaluated. Um, so while there was a larger increase than we expected, fourteen point four, as Angie said. A preliminary budget had an eight percent increase in it. I mean, it, it's not. It's not shocking and, and really all it does is drive down our mill rate because we are revenue limited.
Right. Go ahead, Brian.
And I just, uh, for clarification on that, mill rate is what we've used as far as, for at least the last forty years, I would assume. As far as the funding, I don't want to say mechanism, but it's, it's been a universal thing, especially in Wisconsin, that. We're not all of a sudden looking at the mill rate because it's a favorable number for us this year. This is something that's been consistent in school finance for, for quite some time. So it's, it's a good steady measurement as far as what we're asking for. And I don't want to say the revenue generated, but it's, it's been consistent for. As long as I've been involved in public schools, it's like studying this as a first grader, you know, so.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Brian. And, and also to that point, Green Bay has always, um, fiscally, right? Trying, trying to keep that mill rate as steady as possible. Now, we have seen since the last referendum, it was at ten sixteen, and that has, you know, that has declined as we have gone, right? So we've kind of seen, you know, a, a slight decline. But what you haven't seen in Green Bay is because strategically. But what you haven't seen in Green Bay is because strategically, we've always come back four to five years. That's always been the plan to come back, to get more debt on the books, to address those capital needs that we need through a capital referendum. So that's why you haven't seen the high peaks and the low peaks for Green Bay, because it's always been steady, right? And that's what we strive for because as taxpayers, right, we kind of want to know what we're coming into. We don't want, well, all of a sudden it's $4 this year, next year it might be eight, next year it might be six. So that's really a good indicator that fiscally, right? We've been fiscally responsible that way to keep our mill rate as steady as possible. But of course it's been declining, which is the trend across the state.
Talking about that cycle of all this debt, we're, we just are about to retire from the last referendum. Retire it early, quite early, and saving how many millions in interest payments?
Yeah, I think it was about $12 million that we saved for this last, so the 1617 referendum. So that debt is now paid off, right? So that's where, you know, that's where the cycle comes in, where we, you know, are asking to fill that back up. So, you know, the levy will stay fairly stable.
Not only paid off, but all this long slate of projects were completed on time, in the budget, in, in a very, I mean, amazing way over the last five years. So, so that debt goes away and we take on that next slate and we keep that cycle going and that mill rate steady and declining. This is, this is what we have to do in this state now. And, and we have good, you know, people who manage the, the assets of our, of our district and advise us. And I really appreciate that. And, but it's, it's, it's hard, I think, I find it challenging to, to understand that cycle, how necessary it is to, because this next slate is every bit as important as the last one. These projects can't be ignored if, if we don't pass this referendum. They don't go away. They're still there and desperately needed. So I'm finding, and I've shared, I shared this at the community sessions last week, as I am out in the community and talking to people, that there's actually a lot of, a lot of people do understand and they, they support this referendum. But this, this reassessment from the city has kind of knocked us sideways a little bit. So that's why I wanted to have you here to have another conversation. And if we need to have it repeatedly to reassure people that their taxes are not going to go through the roof and, and that this, this work can be done and, 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 you know, and just get the word out every ti, every chance we can get. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I think I did a poor job of actually with my comments because I think everyone here knows this is a safe business as usual referendum. It's necessary. I think the district's done a great job describing the projects and establishing the necessity and that we're being fiscally responsible. I know because I had to run for this office, how many people tend to vote, right? In the November timeframe. And I know that all of them just got assessment bills, right? And they also probably got a piece of paper from us, but then things changed, right? So I am putting the question to the district, are we going to miss an opportunity if we don't re-paper them? Spend a little bit of money and get this revised story in front of them before the referendum goes. Because if we don't, we may be surprised in November. Because they all have a stimulus of something is a little amiss, they didn't expect it. Should we set that record straight and envision trying to get out, not using Facebook, because that's an echo chamber, and really go out and, and meet the public where they need to be?
I did reach out to Jesse Burnett, who's the city council president, and asked that, because the, the city has a very good example on their website. It's buried. And I asked, I said, do you think maybe you guys could get that out there a little bit more? Or maybe, I don't know, maybe something joint would be beneficial.
I would welcome that. And I know that we're kind of working on that. I don't know if anything's been established yet to just sort of maybe, yeah, do something in a, in a consolidated way with the city to, to again reassure people that this assessment, this reassessment isn't maybe what, what they perceive it to be. So anyway, did any, go ahead, Brian.
I think the focus on that also needs to be, this is an ongoing thing with the reassessment, you know? So obviously the district is asking for support from the community, but that question will continue on past November. So the, the messaging obviously will be consistent with that. I'm just curious if any of you or if Lori has received many comments from the city, from residents and constituents in the area, and once it's been explained to them, has there been kind of acknowledgement, has there been 50/50 split, has, what's been the reaction? Just as a overview with it.
I haven't gotten any, and maybe, maybe Lori has.
Coming up. Okay.
I would say so far we've gotten one community email that talked about that and a bunch of other things. So I wouldn't say it was just about that. But, um, so I would say we do have a plan that we're gonna, we usually do, we usually do two mailings during our referendum. Because when we usually send out the ballot question too, so people have a chance to see that before they go into the voting booth to see what that looks like. We've also talked about some other things, trying to work with the city regarding how to try to simplify. It's a very complicated process. Because I would agree at the community information sessions, I think the, the letters were new, right? People were highly anxious and that was very easily understood when we were at the meetings. I think when we talked to people, they felt a little better. So, um, so I feel like that communication is working. I know all I've really gotten so far from the letter we sent out to staff and again to families today was, we did get one person that responded, that it was very helpful and sort of alleviated some of that anxiety. And, you know, I think it's challenging because we do cover many municipalities. So for us to just say, this is an example for everybody is hard because like I live in Bellevue. So what, what, you know, I do, I, you know, my, I got reevaluation a different year, right? And so it's a little bit different from every, for everybody. I think the thing from my opinion that's important is that, as I was mentioning, I think Brian mentioned earlier, is that we only control what the district does. And so I, I feel that it's important that usually when you see referendum communication, districts will talk about what their impact is on taxes when they're raising their mill rate, right? So they'll talk, because then they can just take an example and say, based on what we're doing with our mill rate, it's going up to this. We're in kind of a weird situation because our mill rate's going to decline no matter what we do. And we can't really give an example because we're covering all these different municipalities. They're all going to have a different, they're, you know, how much their property values are going up changes depending. And I think last year we saw a really extreme example of that where we had some as low as 4% and some as high as 22%, right? So depending on where you live, really, you know, would have made a significant difference. So I think the other thing we're trying to do right now in my department is we'll be putting on a series of videos that are really from the voice of the people who are most impacted by these projects. I think to really help people sort of understand what they, what they mean in our, what do they mean in our district for our students who would have access to ADA equipment, to our West families. When we, when we see some of the challenges they have where they're in their stadium. And, you know, and I think we'll have to then see what the voters decide on November.
Go ahead, Brian.
So just to reiterate the point, the Green Bay School District and previous boards has been very fiscally responsible that we've had this consistent mill rate. And we intend to continue that as this board is approved, putting to referendum, referendum where the mill rate will remain consistent. And this is kind of, not kind of, this is, this is how Green Bay has done business in the past and will continue to as long as this question is involved with the current sitting board. So we're continuing that fiscal planning that has taken place for the last 25 years here of planning ahead.
And I would just add that I think, again, it looks a little different this year than it has in the past because normally we're never at a point where all of the debt is paid off. But because we are a little behind schedule from when we had hoped to go to referendum due to COVID, you know, and we did, as we went out and did our presentations back in 2016, which I was a part of at that time, we did talk about, you know, we, our expectation was we'd be back three to four years because some of this really great work that we would be doing with those 2017 projects and really looking at how we were improving our instructional spaces, you know, how we were trying to address schools having both a commons and a gym. So some of those things that were just kind of needed in our district that we wanted to, to get, we wanted to do that further and that, you know? So I think that we were clear about that at that point. And if, you know, had we done it at that point, we wouldn't have been seeing us in kind of situation where now where we'll be coming to the, you know, we'll have these different mill rate potentially based on whether referendum passes or fails.
Dawn, did you have any questions? Okay. Any other questions? I really appreciate you guys coming. It was kind of short notice, but it felt like, like we needed to have a, have a, a go at this right now. And I wouldn't be at all surprised if we need to do it again. We'll just keep going and getting the word out and reassuring people. So thank you so much. Okay, our next item is, we're going to go into number six action items. So we're going to be voting on these. We weren't able to have discussion last, at our last meeting because we had to cut our meeting short. So we're going to do the motions, get a second, and then we will have discussion that we, you know, this will be the first time. This isn't our usual, the usual way we do things. But that's, this is kind of how we have to do it this particular month. So the first item is Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Procedures Handbook and Policy Council Bylaws. So hit it.
I move that the changes to the Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Procedures Handbook, including selection criteria for the 2022, 2023 program year, and changes to the Policy Council Bylaws for the 2022, 2023 program year as presented and be approved.
Can you do seconds, Laura?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We did, there were attachments last month. I think that, yeah, we still had attachments. Hopefully you've all read through them. And go ahead.
They also gave a presentation.
They did, indeed.
That was very good, so.
Yeah, so. If you are all ready, then we are ready to vote.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next.
I move that the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Task Force recommendations as presented and be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, James.
The members of the district here that presented last time, because I asked for work papers and I have some questions. Are they still here?
I don't know. Okay, no, I'm sorry.
So what's the amplification of not taking a vote on this today? The, the question I, I have is, I need to understand what I'm voting on. Because again, it's for to accept the core commitments, all of which, you know, are legitimate. It's tactically, when's the next touch base with the board? Because I, I have questions about the plan.
So the next steps then would be, and they'll continue, is that the committee will continue to work with others to develop those action steps. So what does that really mean when we have those commitments? What does that mean then in our practice? What are we going to be looking at? So you don't need to take necessarily the vote tonight. We can certainly come back and talk at a future meeting regarding some of the action steps that would be then aligned with those core commitments, if that would be helpful.
Go ahead, Brian.
I'd like to offer a friendly to my motion to table this action item until the next meeting.
I accept a second. Okay. Procedurally, do we, we vote, we take a vote now? Okay. Go ahead, Laura.
Still a discussion. I think something I also heard you ask last time was to look at, was it like the raw data or all the, kind of all of the responses? To be able to review what people submitted from the different groups?
So I'll tell you that I did my best. That is a lot of information that was provided to us to go through. And, you know, yes, I went through as many of the, the links from the plans out to additional resources. I can't tell you that I hit all of them. You know, the breadth of the plan was shocking to me and, and which leads me to some, you know, I'm from, I build products and we always question, when are we done, right? And I looked at that and there's 30 pages of action items in the plan. And I don't know how they fit together and when we evaluate that, you know, we've, we've got a core set of changes that match our vision, right? And I just have questions about that.
Okay. Then we're now going to take a vote to table it for another meeting, for the next meeting. Okay. Are we talking about the very next meeting or the next regular board meeting where we can actually? Well, I guess the next.
I think that we, we have an opportunity to have a conversation in the, the work session. I think I would appreciate that, yes.
Okay. Very good. All right. Are we ready to vote? Okay, go ahead, Kinsey. I'm going to do a voice vote. McCoy?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Mills?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Leighton and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Okay, so six zero. All right, thank you. That is tabled to the next meeting. Next on the agenda.
I move that the middle school, I'm sorry, the middle and high school coursebooks for the 2023, 2024 school year as presented and be approved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Go ahead.
Looking through this, it looks like the change have been made regarding the dual credit that we had spoken to offerings at East High School. I'm correct on that?
Okay.
I'm asking as I'm correct on that?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next.
I move that the Healthy Schools Meal Resolution is presented and be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Brian.
I support this. I made the motion on it as well. It, it would be interesting to see the decrease in number of participants in school lunches and school breakfast programs throughout our schools, both ones that have universal free and reduced lunch and schools that do not, and just to see the decrease in numbers of students participating in it compared to last year. I know some firsthand from seeing some schools, it is drastic. So just to see the information would be interesting at some point, but.
I, I agree. I agree with that. So, okay, but is anybody, are we ready to vote? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next.
I move that three visions to Board Policy, Board of Education Policy 342.6, Alternative Education Programs and Curriculum Modifications as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? I think we're ready to vote. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 370, Co-curricular Activities as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions?
Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you, next.
I move that through revisions to the Board of Education Policy 453.7, Concussions and Head Injuries and Student Athletic Activities as Presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Kinsey? All, the online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 525, Gifts to Staff and Solicitations of Staff as Presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next.
I move that the revisions to Board Paul, Board of Education Policy 672, Procurement and Purchasing as Presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next.
I move that, I'm on the right one, okay? I move that the revisions to Board of Education Rule 672 procurement, procurement requirements and methods as presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion?
Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. We're almost done. Next.
I move that three visions to Board of Education Exhibit 672, Purchase Thresholds for the Green Bay Area Public School District as Presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? James?
Yeah, I just have one question. I asked this like in one of my first board meetings. I just would have clarified my understanding. When we talk about the threshold, $250,000 that has to come to board approval, is that current fiscal year impact? So if you have a multi-year contract, is it the whole contract value that's greater than $250,000? Or only the expenses that hit this contract year or this fiscal year?
My understanding based on the UCC as well as the policies, that is the entire contract. So it's not just the fiscal year. So you can't get around the $250,000 by breaking it up in individual year contracts, $50,000 for five years.
And just one follow-up. And the definition of a renewal. So in IT and software, we were presented with some options for some systems. And one was presented as a renewal, then that limited our actions that could be taken on that. But in reality, I think that was a pilot program where you had, you, you bought the software and then there was an expanded use of the software in year two or three. Does that qualify for renewal?
So long as it would be the same product, but let's say we bought the product for one school for the pilot. And so long as it's the same product, then in the same terms in the contract, but it's then expanded to other schools, that would be considered a renewal. Oh, your microphone.
A renewal is different and the same threshold does not apply. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
James, could you clarify a little bit more?
So if you, if you're going to evaluate a software package, which teaching and learning did, that you would buy a limited number of licenses and you would prototype that and you would pilot it. And then if it meets your evaluation criteria, you would expand the, the use of that. Well, which would mean you could probably get away with buying it for $100,000. But in the second portion of that contract, when you go to renewal, it could be $2 million, right? And I just want to make sure that as we evaluate these that come in front of us, if that did not come up as part of the Essar discussion, that would have been a potential expansion of use of district funds without coming to the board. And that's my assumption. And I'm just checking that and to see if that's something that we need to watch out for. Okay.
Yes.
Do you feel, through the chair to James, do you feel that this policy meets that requirement? Are you comfortable with that?
Honestly, I've, I've, you know, I've talked with Vicky that I was uncomfortable with this policy. And I, I just wanted to have this conversation first before I proposed changes to it. Or specifically around the language around renewals. Now that I understand that $250,000 is contract value versus current year value, I'm very comfortable with that threshold. But I do see that we may have a gap that we could fill with the language around renewals.
Were you comfortable voting tonight, though?
The threshold policy does not, that we just talked about, I don't think it addresses renewals. So it would be a different policy. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we can address that at a different time, but we can vote on this tonight. Okay. Go ahead.
And this is Melissa. These policies, while this is coming kind of on a cycle as we're working through, we can bring that policy to be readdressed next board meeting or at any point, once that language is also said, correct?
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, any, any other questions? Good discussion. All right, we're ready to vote. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Nancy, are you able to vote?
Thank you.
All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Very good. I think, I believe that completes all of our voting for tonight. Just for those that are watching, we, we, these have been vetted. We have had discussion. It might look like we hurried through this, but thi- this isn't the first, this isn't the first time we've seen this. So I just want to reassure people that this, this is, this is just a final, the final step and, and go ahead.
And the public is always welcome to email the board if any concerns with the policies after the working set or the work session. They can contact us with any concerns prior to it, which is why we do the two-week window in between.
Yes, thank you, Brian. Okay, um, the last item is agenda setting. I don't know if anyone has anything there to offer. If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I'll pose. Okay. Thanks, Dawn.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.